Will the clerk please call the rule?
Ms. Baumke?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
Here.
Mrs. Maurer?
Here.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Ms. Snelling?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I've had a request from a board member to switch the order of business, to do presentations by the public, and then do the VDOT quarterly report. I've checked with the county attorney, we do not need to vote on that. So if there's not an objection, we will make that change. Is that all right? Thank you. At this time, it's going to be my honor to make a presentation to Beth Janis on the occasion of her retirement from the treasurer's office. Please join me up front. We've got microphones all over the place. Well, you brought your book with you, taking notes?
Well, I did, no.
I want you to know, I bought a new suit for this occasion. And I don't like... I got up this morning, looked in the mirror, I look like Lake Mooney. I mean, look at this. I look like a Greyhound bus driver. But that's all right. Come on over here. Can I put my arm around you?
Sure.
You sure?
Yeah.
Pat, you heard that. Where's Pat? I'll tell you... This lady and her family have always lived in Hartwood. So we're here today to commemorate her retirement. And we have a proclamation from the board, and it says, "On July the 1st, 1972," she was only 12.
No, 18.
18, I'm sorry. "Bethla P. Beth Janis commenced her career in the Stafford County Treasurer's Office, and has served the citizens of Stafford County with integrity and commitment for 47 years." That deserves a round of applause. Beth started as an account clerk in the Stafford County Treasurer's Office, was promoted to Deputy Treasurer in 1982, and again promoted in 2006 as Chief Deputy Treasurer. On August the 2nd, 2004, she completed the educational requirements to receive her certification and designation as a Master Governmental Deputy Treasurer from the University of Virginia. During her tenure, Beth served the citizens of Stafford County under four different elected Treasurers. Who's the first?
Mac Moncur.
Mac Moncur. Knew him well. My family grew up next to his farm. Her commitment and dedication is reflected in her diligence to ensure that the daily operation of the Treasurer's Office runs proficiently. Her institutional knowledge is vast, and she has been responsible for the oversight and supervision of the most essential duties of the Treasurer's Office. Most importantly, monitoring the money, where it goes. Beth has been guided by a set of strong personal values, and among these values are honesty, integrity, and fairness. She has been a moral compass of the office, respected by her peers, and looked on as a mentor. I see a lot of heads nodding. Beth and her husband Pat have raised three beautiful, strong-minded daughters here in Stafford County, and have instilled in each of them the same courage, confidence, and commitment that makes Beth the devoted leader she has been in the past 47 years to the Stafford County citizens. Congratulations. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
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 Okay. Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for recognizing Chief Deputy Treasurer, Beth Janis.
Can I write? Okay, we got a new one.
(inaudible) gonna saw this.
I don't know why you just didn't start with the better one. Anyways, so I had to write down a little bit, so I would just keep on track, because you know how I am, I don't keep on track. But I just wanted to take a moment to share with everybody another recognition that Beth had received at the Treasures Association of Virginia Annual Conference Banquet. Okay, I'm trying to hold this, Beth, so can you help me? And I just want to go ahead and read it. It's "Distinguished Service Award Presented to Bethla P. Janis, Chief Deputy Treasurer, Stafford County, Virginia, 1972 to 2019, in appreciation and recognition of your 47 years of loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of Stafford County, Virginia, and commitment to our association presented by the Treasures Association of Virginia." And it has our seal and the clock for the Treasures Association of Virginia. And, you know, I just want to also go on and say, this is a bittersweet moment.
That's my words.
I know, right? So, we're happy for Beth, we're a little bit sad, because, you know, she's not going to be in there every day telling us what to do. But anyways, I just also wanted to say, Beth, your institutional knowledge has meant, you know, so much to the success of the Treasurer's Office. I don't know what I would have done without her these past 12 years, and I can't speak for the past four, three Treasurers, but I'm sure that they would say the same. And as far as, you know, the proclamation that said you're a mentor, she's also been a matriarch, the matriarch of our office, and if you, you know, ever need any motherly advice, she will, you know, willingly give it to you and oblige you with that, whether it's solicited or not, okay? And, but more importantly, Beth, you've been a true friend to us all, and I just want to say, may God bless you in your retirement, and may you enjoy these days ahead of you. I love you. So now it's your turn. Do you want to say something?
I'm not sure. I just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I appreciate this, this is an honor. Is it working? Okay. It's an honor for me to receive this proclamation, I really appreciate it. The past 47 years in the Treasurer's Office, it's been like family to me, and it's hard for me to leave, because I love my job. I know, do you? I know, I don't want to cry. But, um... Just don't look at Judy. Don't look at Judy, let me write... Is she crying, Judy? Stop. Let me see if I can read my words, because I can't remember them. Okay. The Treasurer's Office has been my home, second home, for 47 years. I've had the pleasure of working under four Treasurers. Each one of them was a great boss, and they each taught me something different. I have enjoyed every minute of working for the county where I grew up in, and making lifelong friends, and serving the citizens of Stafford County. Stop crying. You make me cry. Like Laura said, my retirement is bittersweet for me, because I love my job, but I know it's time for a change, and a new chapter to start in my life, devoting my time to my husband, my beautiful daughters, and my four beautiful grandchildren. Thank you very much, and have a great afternoon.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. (inaudible)
Okay, I'm going to go back to her.
Thank you. Make sure they saw... (inaudible)
move public presentations up to the front. I do have three speaker cards. I would ask that when you come to the microphone, if you, to state your name and address, unless you're a student, if you're a student, state your name only. You will have three minutes from the time you start talking, the green light will signify a go. The yellow light is you've got a minute left, and when the red light hits, it's time to wrap up your comments. First speaker card, Caitlin Fullmore.
I'm Caitlin Fullmore, and I am a student at Colonial Forge High School. I am here to give the members of the board a quick update on the now officially named Changing Stafford's Roads group. Since the last board meeting, we have had two group meetings that have allowed us to continue to flesh out the group and discuss group goals. Our current mission statement is to make county roads safer through advocacy of road improvement and more frequent and proactive maintenance of roadway systems. We believe that as the county continues to develop, it also needs to keep in mind that the many student drivers that live and drive these increasingly populated roadways daily. As of the last board meeting, we have not yet put out a new survey. When the new survey is to be released, currently projected to being mid to late July, we want to have it distributed all throughout all districts in order to have a more dispersed and unbiased opinion on roadway conditions. If the board has any ideas on how to distribute the survey, that would be greatly appreciated. When the survey is completed, and if the bond referendum is passed, we would greatly appreciate it if you consider our results from the survey detailing where roads could be improved, when deciding which roads to apply the bond referendum to. One problem we have already seen is that Stephanica Road, one of the most reported roads on our last survey, did not make the top 20 list of year research, or list of roads the bond referendum money would be applied to. Many students drive this road to school each day, and we would caution the board to, again, consider such details when applying the bond referendum to certain roads. Lastly, we would like to thank the board for being very cooperative throughout this whole process. This process is relatively new to all of us, and many of you guys have guided us unbiasedly. Changing Stafford's Roads looks forward to working with the board and other county and transportation officials in the future. And lastly, I'd also like to promote our social media. We currently have a Facebook and Instagram under the name of Changing Stafford's Roads.
Thank you. The next speaker card is Gina Chan.
My name is Gina Chan, I'm a student at Colonial Forge High School. A fun fact about me is that I have a fear of public speaking. However, my fear of dying in a car crash or losing another friend due to Stafford's Road, it's much greater than my fear of public speaking. I would like to bring two specific areas to your attention today, with the first being Stephanica Road. Stephanica Road is one of the worst roads I have ever driven on, and it's hard to name just one problem that this road has. Not only are the potholes endless, but the vegetation at most turns is overgrown. You can't see oncoming cars due to the trees blocking your view. Also, the curvy nature of the road, like the rat road, is terrible. There is one very sharp curve at the bottom of a short hill, which means that your speed is increasing more than usual, and once I was actually taking that curve with my friend, and she compared it to being like a roller coaster. But if I wanted the thrill and fear of a roller coaster, I would go to Stafford's, Kings Dominion, but not the back roads. And I also want to talk about the merge lane going on to I-95 North from, when you go off Centerport Parkway, and you go to I-95 North from the Stafford Airport exit, the merge lane is very, very short, and it's dangerously short. I drove that yesterday, and today actually coming here, and I counted, in Mississippi's, one Mississippi, two Mississippi, I counted between four to five Mississippi's of that merge lane, and that's way too short. It's much shorter than any of the other merge lanes going into highways. And when I was actually in driving school, my driving instructor, she told me that it's very dangerous to take that road. If there's a tractor trailer coming on that lane that you have to go on, then you either have to slow down tremendously to let it pass you, or otherwise you would get hit. But not much people, not many people know that. So if there's a tractor trailer coming, and you're going, then, once that merge lane ends, which comes very fast, you would end up getting hit. And just being on that merge lane is incredibly, like, anxiety provoking, because, once you are on that lane, you have just a few seconds to get into the highway. And that's all I want to bring to your attention, I just wanted to bring those specifically areas, because those are the two areas that I fear are the most endangered in, and I know many, many other drivers, especially student drivers, that feel just as endangered on those two areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker card is Rebecca Chong.
Okay, I'm going to start now. Good evening, members, good afternoon, members of the board. Today I'll be talking on the finances of fixing our roads. The major reasons given for the needing to change the roads and the road bond given in 2008 was resurfacing restoration and rehabilitation of Stafford's roads. In 2008, you asked for $70 million, for a $70 million debt for road projects for nine major road improvements, such as Warrington, Garrisonville Courthouse, and many others. While the bond referendum allowed for opportunity for more popularized roads to receive much needed improvement, it now currently fails to advocate the proper amount of money for future roads which have become popularized due to development. So that brings me to today. I did some research and compared the previous, our previous survey from our top five roads to the expected allocation given by the board in 2014, a report given by you guys. And in 2014, Popular Road was given $3 million, Kellogg Mill was given 1.8 million, and Mountainview Road was given 11.2 million. Nothing to Shelton Chop or Winding Creek, which were previously mentioned in our road survey. Bless you. While we appreciate the work that is being conducted, it fails to give a direct representation from the people at this point. And it fails to realize how this county is expanding rapidly, and we are not keeping up with our current roadway system. The bond referendum also does not advocate for the little things that would have prevented Helen's tragedy and so many others, such as potholes, overgrown vegetation, and lack of signage. The bond referendum has so much potential, but don't forget about the changes of this county and its citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. That is all the speaker cards I have, so I'll go to the audience. Does anyone on my right wish to address the board for any subject? Seeing none, I'll come back to my left. Anyone on my left?
Do I have a couple of things I'd like to pass out to you guys, if it's all right?
Yeah, please hand them over to the clerk. Mr. Foley, we need to get that railing taken down.
(inaudible)
We'll put it on the other side.
(inaudible) one of them. There are pictures, and also petition that we have, we have a...
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Paul Magnar, I live in Wide Water, Virginia, on Decatur Road.
Thank you.
I live in between Brent Point, at the corner of Brent Point, I live, I have a Wide Water pickup park at the end of my road, okay? VDOT came through and did a survey, 86% of the cars that are coming through there are doing an average of 38 miles an hour and a 25 mile an hour though, okay? First picture I'd like to show you is of my service dog. That was run over by a tow truck at the end of my driveway. Four weeks to this day, he would have been 13 the day after, or a week after he was run over, okay? We've been asking for the county to come out, and VDOT to come out and put a stop sign at that intersection. There's already one at Brent Point. We need to slow this traffic down before a child or somebody else gets hurt, okay? The first picture is of my service dog. The second picture is a sign 30 feet away coming into Wide Water towards my house. Then you have one of 20 feet away, okay? Then you should have one of 10 feet away, okay? Then you have the intersection of my home where I have put a picture of my dog, 24 by 36, at the end of my driveway, so that whoever hit him and left him in the ditch would have to look at him every day when he comes by my home, okay? You can see from the end of my driveway is the next picture across Brent Point, they have a stop sign. We need a three-way stop sign, stopping this traffic. What is the best way to slow people down? Put a stop sign, put speed bumps and stop signs, and an additional $200 fine, okay? You'll see the next one, there's a post there, but you see no road sign. There's actually a road sign there, okay? Then you'll see the last two pictures are the pictures of going out around the turn, and then the speed limit sign that you cannot see. VDOT just came out the other day and cleared across from my driveway. They knocked over the directional signs, the yellow signs that direct you in which way to go, and they left it in the ditch for over a week. Not only that, but they did it at Brent Point. I've contacted VDOT, Dara Frye, and I've been in contact with her almost every other day, I've been in contact with Jack Cavalier. Jack Cavalier has worked with us the best that he can, but we need a lot more people and a lot more support on this to get this done before somebody really gets hurt. You know, it's bad enough that it was my dog, but it could have easily been a child. We'll be back here at 7 o'clock this evening. I live next to a federal police officer, and he also has to deal with the same situation of trying to back out of his driveway and having people doing on the average of 38 miles an hour, which means that we have cars and tow trucks coming through there at 58, 55 miles an hour, okay? Now, Quay Harbor allowed them to open the back gates so that their people don't have to go down Route 1 to deal with the traffic to get in their front gates, okay? So they come flying through our neighborhood to get home as soon as they can, and to come out to beat the traffic going north on Route 1 in the morning. Now, if I'm coming north on Route 1 and I'm hit traffic, I can't go through Quay Harbor to get to my home without the traffic. Why are they allowed to do it to us? Just because they live in a gated community, or their tax dollars better than mine? I don't think so. So I think this is something that we need to address as a community for not just our safety, but everyone that comes through this community, that we, that they know that we care about their safety. So I appreciate your time, and I'll be back to you guys this evening with a lot of the people in our community that are at work right now that feel the same way. And like I said, we have an online petition of over 500 people, and then the petition of what I've gotten from my pastors, UPS drivers, other people in my neighborhood, within 12 hours, that's how many people I got signed on paper before I got this petition.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your comments. Anyone else on my left want to address the board on any subject?
Hi, my name is Corinne Rogers, I'm a student at Colonial Forge. I'm going to be giving a speech on behalf of David Sousa today. He says, "Good afternoon, board members. Even though I am away, I still wish to address you on the issue of our rural roads. In 2004, the county took a road survey, and our group agrees that these are key in our fight to fix them. Therefore, I must personally advocate for the bond referendum to be put on the ballot this year. The county's bond will provide us with the necessary funds without raising property taxes. I am also in contact with representatives to the General Assembly, and I am meeting with a delegate on July 16th to discuss introducing a bill to actually help increase the county's ability to play a role. I will be discussing with Delegate Mark Cole how to get ordinances, either by state or by county, to get vegetation back from the roads. I will keep the board informed as the bill molds. Lastly, I apologize for the unpolished speech. I am currently at Boy State running for governor. If you could sponsor me, that would be great, because I'm fighting for you when I return, so vote for Sousa. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Anyone else on my left wish to address the board? Anyone in the chamber at all wish to address the board? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move to the next agenda item, presentation, VDOT quarterly presentation. Lynn Keenan, and Lynn, I want to thank you so much for allowing us to flip the schedule there.
Absolutely. All right, good afternoon, I'm Lynn Keenan, I'm the residency administrator for Fredericksburg. I apologize for the late send on this, this report. I've been out of the office for the past two weeks at a training program, so, just to go through some of the construction projects as a beginning, the 630 and 95 project has, is that the clearing phases right now around Hospital Boulevard? You should see a lot of that work going through right now. The 95 southbound Rappahannock River Crossing, the bridge B-men repairs over 95 were completed two weeks ago?
Lynn, excuse me, I recognize Ms. Maurer.
Okay, on the 630 interchange, there is a light right there that is supposed to go in at Kellogg Mill, Winding Creek, and Courthouse Road. It was scheduled to go in in the summertime. Is it still planned to be up and operational by the time school starts?
I am not sure on the exact date of that, but I can find out and get back to you.
Okay, that's, it's critically important to get that light up and operational before school starts.
In August.
In August, yes. I was, the last time I was asked about that, I was told that it was going to be done in early summer.
Okay.
It's now early summer, and I just want to make sure that we're on track with that light, because that's a significant safety issue for those kids.
Okay, absolutely.
Go ahead.
All right.
(inaudible).
Okay. So the Ferry Road project, Mr. Cohen, in your area, is actually running ahead of schedule. If you see, the work has been going very well, we've had a contractor working on that. So that's progressing, we don't have an exact date, but the curb and gutter is in, and they're extending the turn lane on Route 3 right now. For the 95 northbound Rappahannock River Crossing, there is scheduled to be a public hearing next week, which has been postponed. A new date will be pending, and we are sending letters to all residents that have land adjacent to the, to 95. Many of you were at the groundbreaking for the FredX on June 5th, so that is moving forward with Transurban. And then moving on to some of our maintenance, and we can go over any specific questions that you have after that. The Leland Project, Leland Road was, the ditch work was cleaned out, and we've repaved, we've done spot repaving in that area with asphalt. We've also done trench widening on Andrew Chapel, and that's scheduled to be repaved in the next few weeks. I have a lot of mowing issues that we're working on, and I, rather than giving you the litany of where we are, we're working on the primaries first, we should be done within the next two weeks. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Lynn, let me recognize Mr. Dudenheffer.
Lynn, I had a nice talk with Ms. Parker last night, so, but the, and something that will be of very interest to these young people who've come here is, back several years ago, VDOT cut back on the number of times they mow their secondary roads, right, to two times a year.
Correct.
What I proposed to her, and I hope you will take back with them, is, at a very minimum, if you can't afford to do all the roads, say, four ti, at least four times a year, we should identify a list of the places where sightlines are not, when the vegetation grows, you can't see, and we should absolutely do those four times a year. It wouldn't be like doing all of Kellogg Mill Road, but there are turns in Kellogg Mill Road that needs to be done, same with Mountainview, same with Stephanica, you know, we, and I could go down the very list, but twice a year is not enough.
I absolutely understand. We are working with Stafford County staff to identify those areas, and we're looking to do more intersection clearing where there's line of sight issues. So we are working on that, I received that feedback from Marcy last night, and that's something that we're definitely working on putting on our schedule this summer.
Well, I, but my, what I'm proposing is, is that it not be a one-time thing.
Absolutely, I understand.
That, as a matter of course, we have this list that we know where these dangerous roads are and where the vegetation grows fast, especially when you get the rain that we've had, and that, we know next summer, they're going to hit all of those, and we don't have to have somebody having to call in and complain to your hotline. I've heard you've got quite a few calls into the, into that line, and it's rightfully so, so, please keep that up. Would you give us a follow-up on that when you come next time?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, so, in conjunction with staff, I was wondering if we could all, because, I mean, I know in my district exactly where a lot of my hotspots are, could, because staff, I would think that our staff doesn't know all of them. Could we each individually submit a list to Tom Foley, and they could send that to our staff, and then get it to you? I mean, because I, I know where my hotspots are, and I would think that other members of this board know as well. So then we would have a compilation of things, and it wouldn't just be VDOT and our staff. Yeah, absolutely. That's a good idea. Okay, all right. And I do want to thank you for everything that happened over on Leland Road, and for my colleagues that weren't aware, we had water that was coming up out of the ditches, because the ditches weren't dug out sufficient enough, and we would have standing water on the roads many times, and it would freeze during the winter months. So VDOT went in, and this is the area where all the Fredericksburg trash trucks, because we have a joint agreement with, on our board, all the trash trucks go all the way up Leland and on, left on Potomac Run Road, and I'm telling you, this road was beat up, beat up. And I just drove over there yesterday, not knowing what I was going to see, and then you and I talked, and I was like, wow, this is, it's a completely different road. So thank you very much for those efforts. All right. So we have an extensive mowing, we are finishing up with the primaries in the next week, and we'll be moving on to the secondary, so that's a lot of the backroads we're doing, we're bringing a Boomax in, so we have that scheduled to begin tomorrow on Centerport, Stony Hill, and Mount Olive. So we're going to be bringing the vegetation back, we call it the window, so it's from the right of way to the right of way, and up 15 feet, so it should give you a big box in which to drive, and we're going to be doing that on a number of these backroads. We've heard a number of the complaints, we're taking all of that, and we're re-racking and stacking how we're doing work, we're pulling a number of people up from our more rural areas, so we're bringing VDOT crews up from Caroline and Spotsylvania Counties to help address this situation. So I just want you to know, we've heard all of the outcry from the public, we've heard your responses, we're taking this very much to heart, we're working as hard as we can to try to catch back up and do what we can. to try to catch back up and do what we can to make the roads more clear for the public. Yes, sir?
While we're, we're talking about that, you, you've heard of our, in our road study, we have wedge projects, right? And the wedge projects add extra width to the lanes, puts some shoulders in and does, but it, it isn't effective, and I'm saying this, I know you know this already, but it isn't effective unless you have an overlay over the top. So you resurface the top, and it pulls all the road together. What I've asked Marcy and several others is to look at, we should have a plan where, we, we have lots of bad topped roads, but the ones, I don't think safety is considered, and I, maybe I'm wrong, but safety isn't a major factor in you determining next year what roads are going to be done. And I would propose that we actually come up with a plan where we let you know the roads that we want to go ahead and add the extra wedge to, and that we combine, and we know over multiple years what roads are going to get done. Well, I know we can't do them all at once, I'm not advocating that, but to have a plan put out 18 months, and maybe it's not the best to resurface roads in a subdivision. And people will probably already get emails in my email box, but, but if, it may be better if we do those wedge projects on Topla Road, you know, I could go down the whole list. Ramif Church, I mean, I drive on all them, they're horrendous. But you understand what I'm saying? I mean, major factor in determining which ones we do would be coordinated with Stafford County, and that safety would be a major part, unless we have, I mean, unless we have a road that's so falling apart in a subdivision or somewhere that way. When you get into the details, I know it's difficult, but I, I would really like to see us do that. I mean, our, our staff, if I'm not wrong, Jason, I mean, you guys basically have been reacting to VDOT as opposed to us working together using safety as a major factor in what we do when we do these things.
Well, I'm, I would counter, sir, that we are working closely with Stafford County, and we do have-
No, no, you are, but I'm just saying, is your schedule, say, you've already worked on your schedule for next year, and you let the contracts out, I believe, this summer, okay? Those, I would, I would bet that if we go look at the list you're going to do in Stafford, they are not safety-related. They are potholes, you know, roads that have, are deteriorating on the surface, and many of them aren't unsafe, they're just not nasty roads. Whereas I say we have nasty roads that are also unsafe, and they should be a priority, and we should work on a, a plan that actually addresses them in a logical order. And I, Jason's coming up, maybe he, I, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here, but it's frustrating that, you know, we may be willing to come up with a bunch of money that will do these wedge projects, but if we don't have your cooperation, we can't afford to do the resurfacing too. We need to have everybody arm-in-arm, understanding that road safety is more important than whether it's potholes. I mean, I-
And I would agree. I would say Stafford County and VDOT have been working very closely to come up with a plan that involves both wedge widening in conjunction with our resurfacing schedule where needed, and we are working closely with staff to come up with both safety and, and projects that need to be resurfaced based on the, the exhausted life of the pavement, so.
Yeah, I would just say, and Keith had worked previously extensively with Kyle. Of course, VDOT primarily is going through and looking at them from a life of pavement perspective, but then-
You know all the official words. I'm looking at pot of lives.
Sure, but then they have worked with us, for example, Andrew Chapel was a great, great example, where they pull, we, we were able to go ahead and get those funds on there, and then if you look at next, next year, I think Decatur Road was a little further down on their list for resurfacing, but they pulled it up because we, we said this is a real concern for us from a safety perspective. So there, there has been that, and, and we, and, and I, I was going to address at some point some of the things we're doing just to work with Lynn on how to kind of develop that relationship.
Could we make sure we put that on the infrastructure committee agenda for next time to have a, an update on that? And 18 months out is, I don't think that's a plan. That's only a short-term fix. I think we need a multi-year plan that, that looks at that.
We do have a multi-year plan, sir.
Okay, I'd like to see it.
We will be happy to provide that.
Lynn, how much longer is your presentation? I've got a lot of-
I can take whatever questions.
Well, I've got a lot of questions. You want to take them now?
Sure, that's fine.
Mr. Cohen, I think, is next, and then Ms. Bomke, and then Ms. Shelton, then Mr. Cavalier, and then Ms. Mauer.
I wish I had worn flats.
I'm not going to ask anything, so just go with it.
It's the Lynn Show. Real quickly, and I appreciate that, I had heard from Jason and from other staff about you working together about moving items for safety's sake, and so I appreciate that. And they also informed me, so you let me know if I'm, I don't get this right, and I'm sure I'll get a, a look by Mr. Towery. But if we're the county wanting to try to address any of those potholes, which the, changing Stafford's Roads Group brought forward as a safety issue, or line of sight, or other issues, the mirrors or whatnot, if we wanted to do that, rather than just keep adding to your workload, the process would be that we would contact you, there's a permit, there's a fee, and then, then we could go ahead and actually address some of those items ourselves.
Under permit, correct.
Right. And then is that, just real quickly, so that everybody else can ask you more questions, is that a state mandated process that would go through the legislature to change, or is that an internal process? And the reason why I'm asking is, is if we wanted to expedite this to do something more timely, which would be the best route for us to look?
So work can be done in the right of way, either by VDOT's contractor, VDOT themselves, or under contract, or under permit, so those are, that's-
But altering that process about getting the permit and paying the fee, is that, is that something we go to the state legislature to change, or is that something we go to you all to try to change?
I'm going to defer to David Beal. He's the Assistant Residency Engineer for Land Use and Permit.
Well, we, we just want to give you a moment to rest.
Thank you.
Hi, we've worked with the county on what we call a countywide permit, so it's, if we could set some parameters under these conditions, we'll use this traffic control. We can look at waiving permit fees, but the permit is the vehicle to authorize the work. But we could look at issuing a permit that covered a large area that enabled you to do things on your schedule with proper notification, so that it's not a, it's not a hindrance to the, to the process.
I, I would suggest this goes to infrastructure, because I'm sure the board wants to know what the cost involved, where we're going to get the money and that type of stuff. So could we schedule this for infrastructure, Mr. Foley?
Yes, sir, we actually have targeted this with the next meeting.
Okay, good. Ms. Bomke?
So Lynn, I, I know that you all contract out some projects. How do you make that determination, and how can we hold the contractor, like the, the project that the gentleman from Wide Water mentioned? I don't know if that was a VDOT or a contracted project, but how, how do you all make the decision on what you contract out, and how can we make them more accountable? Because I've had a few situations where maybe it wasn't completed 100%, it was more like 95.
So it's basically based on what we have available with state forces, so both manpower and equipment, and then the time that would be required of each project. If that's something that can be done within the skillset of our VDOT employees, we certainly like to go that route first, because it's more economical for us. But if that project is significantly beyond the capacity, the time, or the skillset within our area headquarters, and also noting that there are less than 30 people that work for VDOT in the field in, in Stafford County, then those are areas where we would look to contract when possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if there's ever a situation where any of you are dissatisfied with the work, I absolutely encourage you to contact the residency, and we'll go back out and address that again.
Ms. Shelton?
Good morning, I, or afternoon, I don't know what it is. I did have the opportunity to talk to Ms. Parker last night, and I shared with her our wedge widening, and I've already thanked you guys for Andrew Chapel. I just have a couple of questions about guardrails and the little barrels that are out there. Number one, why are there barrels out on Andrew Chapel right now? I'm assuming because there's a drop-off capability that's been built there or, or something, and it might be the same answer as you're going to talk to me about on Brook Road, where we've had those rows of barrels, which are doing wonderful job of making people slow down and be careful, but what is the transition from that? Because I understand that there's not going to be guardrail put there, and there's like maybe a three-foot drop-off on the side, so I don't know what those rules are, and I'd really like to be able to tell people what that solution's going to look like.
So specifically on Brook Road, there isn't enough room, after that was where the soil nails were put into place, and we built that shoulder back up, and there isn't sufficient room to be able to properly anchor guardrails, so we're putting up delineators. Those have been ordered, and I believe that they're scheduled to be installed by VDOT in the next few weeks. So those barrels will be going away. That's a temporary condition, just to alert drivers to the change in the status from what it was before, what they're used to. Really, that's just to call their attention and try to calm traffic down. I don't, we checked with our traffic engineering. I don't see that there's a plan to put guardrail on Andrew Chapel, but I will, I will check to see if there's a plan for further delineators on that, on that road. I, I don't believe that there is, so I'll find out more where those barrels are, why they're there, and if we can get them taken away.
Yeah, by the way, again, everyone loves it, so thank you very much, and it's a great example of the combination of the wedge widening that Stafford County is paying for, along with the plan that you have for overlays, which is why I also shared our current plans or draft plans that we have for what that wedge widening should look like. But if anybody wants to see what that particular solution looks like, go down Andrew Chapel, but don't do it between the hours. No, never mind. Okay, thanks.
Lynn, first of all, I want to thank you for taking care of the project at Able Lake. That was a need-to-have, must-have, and turnaround was amazingly fast for, for any government agency to do anything within 24 hours is, is almost a miracle. So I congratulate you and your staff for that. And then to turn around the next week, and Mr. Magner had his loss of a service dog right there, and I basically asked you to do the same thing at that intersection of Brent Point Road and Decatur Road, and you guys came out and, and cleared that very well. And I know you've already embarked on the traffic study, and, and so hopefully we'll clean up these signs that got knocked down and the, and look at, I know preliminary assessment anyhow, from what I'm told, was probably a three-way stop is not warranted at this time, but we could be looking at some serious traffic calming measures to include things like, you know, the additional signage, the additional $200 fine, all those things. And I think we can work the $200 fine through the, through the county process. We have a, a process there. And so it, you've been wonderful in taking all the phone calls from both Mr. Magner and myself, and I appreciate that. Now, and I do know, I just want to reconfirm in public that the Decatur Road wedge widening project is on the schedule for next summer. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And so, again, please keep me in the loop on anything we're doing with that intersection at Brent Point and Decatur Road, because that, that's, that's a tough intersection, because as Mr. Magner stated, the, particularly the trucks coming in and out of Pick Apart there, loaded with a lot of junk vehicles, are screaming through that intersection. I, I was there and witnessed it firsthand. And so we really need to slow those guys down. I know Deputy Colby back in the back here does, does, he pretty much inherited that position by virtue of where he lives, and so he gets, he gets to be out there all the time, I know. And he can't be everywhere all the time, but he does that, and so anything that we can do to, to slow down those trucks in particular, that, that's the most dangerous part of, of that area, in addition to the, to the regular vehicles. And so let me, keep me in the loop on all that stuff. And two other quick things, Stonebridge subdivision, if we could take a look at the entirety of that, their, their roads have not been addressed since they were first developed about 20 or so years ago, I believe. And so that's a, they've deteriorated greatly. And the, and the one issue I talked to David Beal about, again, I don't know if it was today already, I think, 950 Wide Water Road that's been on and off for a long time, and so I'm hoping you've made contact with Mr. Decatur on that. We'd like to get that taken care of.
Yes, so we sent our superintendent out there this morning, and he's going to go back and look at that again. And then the signs on Decatur are being put back up tomorrow.
Perfect.
So we checked on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Mauer?
So a couple of things. First off, on the resurfacing projects that you had mentioned, the 2019 resurfacing that's underway, I'm particularly interested in Shelton Shop Road and whether or not we had any wedge widening for that planned or identified, and what's, what's concerning me as I'm looking at all of these resurfacing underway, have we talked about the 2019 resurfacing and whether or not there's some wedge widening that we could do in conjunction with that? And I'm kind of directing that to both you, Mr. Towery, and, and-
Just breaking out the wedge, safety widening.
Yeah, the whole thing. That's just such a horrible road. Shelton Shop, we're, we're having accidents on that particular road, like once every two weeks. It's, it's becoming incredible. And while he's looking that up, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to jump down on your, on your presentation, if you don't mind. The Vista Woods drainage, why, while I see that, you know, we've got crosspipes at Stevenson Heck Step that you're working on, what's conspicuously missing, which used to be the second bullet point, was the resurfacing that was planned after all the drainage pipes are completed, and I want to make sure that that resurfacing in Vista Woods is not left off by-
That is, that is absolutely still on the schedule. We are trying to do this to, with state forces, so that's the reason that our crews are out there. We're trying to save a little bit of money where we can, and we have state forces working on those crosspipes, but absolutely after they are complete in there, it will be resurfaced.
All right, that's, it, it's normally the second bullet, so.
So fear, I apologize for leaving that off. Absolutely.
Okay.
Vista Woods will be repaved at the end of all of the, the crosspipe work, but there are, I believe, 68 crosspipes.
And some that you don't know about, that got pointed out.
Very heavily cross-piped neighborhood, so we are really fixing those as we come across them. Thank you.
Shelton Shop, just, I don't know, I was looking in the wedge widening, that's one of the Bond projects between Mountain View and Courthouse.
And I was, I was aware of that it was one of the Bond projects, but I'm looking at all the other resurfacing projects, and have we looked at any of those for 2019? And whether there's wedge widening and done any coordination on that?
So everything for 2019 is already in place, in that the, the road that was done was Andrew Chapel, next year Decatur's up.
Okay.
And so we're, and when I met with Kyle, probably about a month ago, we were coordinating the next two to three years, just taking a look at what those next roads would be.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I think that's all I have, if you want.
Anyone else have any questions for Lynn? Anything at all? I certainly want to thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for what you're doing. I know you have a very difficult job.
All right, thank you all.
And I also know that what you do is mainly controlled out of Richmond, not out of Fredericksburg, so thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
I don't believe there are any additions or deletions, deletions to the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So, move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. Reports by board members. Adam Clark.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you very much. Very quickly, I attended the memorial for Helen Wang. This was a very touching, very moving experience, and just brings to focus, A, what amazing individual this was, and how important this is to deal with. On a happier note, this past Saturday, I had the great pleasure of attending the graduation at Colonial Forge High School and, and seeing so many of the seniors that I get to interact with every day, walk across the stage, which is one of the best parts of this job. Lastly, and I'll keep it way under the five-minute minimum, maximum, Ms. Mauer, just an invitation to everyone to, especially the members of the board, to go to Ferry Farm on the Fourth of July. It's from 10 to 4. In communicating with the members of the Ferry Farm Foundation, they extended a heartfelt welcome to the members of the Board of Supervisors, as well as the members of our public, to go and experience the Fourth of July at our founding father's boyhood home. And that is it. Thank you.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
Thank you.
Thank you. I also attended the memorial and it really was put together well and it was special. I was very disappointed a couple days later when a picture of the Wang family showed up on the front page of the Freelance Star at a point where they were in intense grief. And I'll let you know that I had it, had a long discussion with them. It's very similar to a picture that I appeared in and to me, it, it was, even if they were, they felt they had permission to go out there, the selection of that picture for the front page was totally and absolutely uncalled for. And if you get a chance to tell anyone at the Freelance Star, you can tell them, stop selling newspapers on the grief of families that are having issues, so. I also attended a meeting with you guys, a lot of you over at Mountain View High School. We spoke for about an hour and a half and, and I thought it was a great meeting. I wish your parents could see you guys. I don't know if many of them are coming out, but you guys are making a difference and it's, it's terrific to just see you guys and the way you're organized. I'm, I'm especially proud of you guys and I don't, I'm not related to any of you, so. One, I'd just like to make one final reiteration of something that I said at that meeting that I think is important today, and that is, be careful and don't listen to what is said by anyone, but watch what is done. Words and actions, two different things. So, thank you very much.
Mrs. Mauer.
So I also attended the Helen Wang Memorial and it was heartbreaking, but if there's a shining light in all of this, it's all of you who are continuing in her memory to ensure that the Stafford County roads are focused on. And so I thank all of you for being here. Also attended PRTC. Significant amount of money accumulating in those coffers, Mr. Foley. I'm certain that staff is monitoring that very closely, but that is money that we can use for these transportation projects that are so desperately needed. FAMPO, had a FAMPO meeting last night and also GWRC. One of the concerns that I'm starting to have with that organization, even though I'm relatively new, is the repeated, but this is the way we've always done it. And if there's anything that hasn't been my mantra in the short time that I have served on this board is, the one thing to send me high and to the right is to hear, but this is the way we've always done it, especially when we don't have considerably favorable reviews from our highway, federal highway reviewer. So we, as a board, need to kind of keep an eye on what FAMPO is doing because they are a significant player in transportation and transportation decisions. And I was recently appointed to a subcommittee, a two-man, a subcommittee on the finances and we're making some, some financial policy changes there, such as recompeting contracts or competing contracts. And so we're gonna see some significant policy recommendations during my last six months on that board. Also attended the Rotary Retreat of the Flags. If any of you have enjoyed those flags that have been out in front of Courthouse, that's from the Rotary Club. And they had a special ceremony on Flag Day prior to removing those flags and it was a special event to behold. And what they did at that particular event was they honored one of our local heroes here, a volunteer for fire and rescue, and it was a wonderful ceremony to attend and I thank Mr. Snellings for his great remarks there. And the Frederick groundbreaking. So my husband drives to DC or to the Pentagon every day and having those hot lanes extended is going to be extremely helpful here to the Fredericksburg region. So looking very much forward to the extension of hot lanes. And FAB. Today at the FAB meeting, there were a couple of recommendations that were made. One is for the CIP policy. We are looking at not only unfortunately removing the, the schools from the decision-making process and it's because of lack of participation, not because we don't want them. And, but we are also asking staff to include transportation. Before, it used to be, here are all of the buildings that we're going to build and here are your transportation projects. And they didn't get racked and stacked together. And if you look at the CIP, I kind of look at transportation as being, you know, ratcheting up in importance and we need to look at racking and stacking those priorities together instead of separately. So that should be coming forward to the board sometime soon, although a lot of this will be dependent upon whether or not the bond referendum makes it to, not only to the ballot, but also whether or not it gets approved. And finally, I, I want to talk about being the mother of a Forge student. I got to attend the graduation at Colonial Forge and now I've joined the ranks of all of my other colleagues here on this board and not having any children in Stafford County public schools with the exception of Mr. Cohen there, who every year has about 150. So, so it's, it was very bittersweet, but one of the proudest moments I'll have on this board is being able to hand her her diploma and give her that big hug. So I congratulate any of you here who have graduated from Colonial Forge and, and congratulations to all the graduates this year. And Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull number seven and number nine from the consent agenda.
Ms. Shelton.
Well, mine's gonna be really fun because I want to show off this trophy that we received from the Quia district. And this was from the spring fling earlier on. If you remember, many of the board members were trash talking and talking about how great their little district is gonna be and we had the most people. So I get the wonderful pleasure of holding this trophy for this year and I challenge next year for another dis, what, you didn't win. Okay, you didn't win. You did not win. I own the trophy. And so I want to thank all the members from Quia that went out there to do the 5K because we all need exercise. And so there's no such thing as too much exercise in my mind. Next thing, I also attended the FAMPO meeting. I'm a member of a subcommittee where we're re-changing our bylaws, we're having some challenges between the different groups. And I fully hope and believe that we are gonna work through those because we need to get through some of these challenges so we can focus more fully on our transportation needs. And then furthermore, I also attended the Frederick groundbreaking ceremony. Now, why I'm gonna bring it up, 'cause a lot of us did that. But that was the fourth time I've seen Secretary Valentine in less than four months and she's the Secretary of Transportation. Why is that important? Is because I want her to know and never to forget at every meeting that Stafford County has a problem with transportation. We all know it, we live it every day. I want her to remember that. And she's also given us some advice to be able to address our challenges that we have in the Quia district primarily with Route 1. When you hear us talk about, and today we're gonna do that, we talk about our comprehensive road study, one of the things you don't know is that in, in the Quia district, not on that list, is Route 1. Every single one of you guys know that? I want to make sure that she knows that. And she gave us some advice and I'm happy to say that on the FAMPO meeting last night, the FAMPO group decided that we will have a discussion about what we're gonna do about the I-95 bailout in Route 1. And so we're gonna start looking at that in, in August. So that's a yay thing. The second thing I want to talk about is I went to the Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is an opportunity that we have for Stafford County employees to receive benefits after they retire, primarily health benefits. We've been contributing that, to that fund for 10 years and it starts, we've contributed $4 million, but through our contributions and the investments, it's grown to 7.3. I would like to say that was the same for the schools and I understand the schools are putting in place a program to transfer, what was in March, $21 million that they have kept back that haven't been transferred over to this board. And I'd like to see us be able to give those same benefits that we're giving our employees in Stafford County over to the schools. And I think that wraps up my comments, sir.
Ms. Baumke.
Yes, thank you. I enjoyed the Stafford High School graduation and I believe it was probably the coolest weather we've had in 10 years at a graduation. It was wonderful. I just want to say congratulations to all the graduates out there at all of our high schools and best wishes for what you plan to do in the future. One of the exciting things we had is we had a sister who was a current service, active-duty service member who came and surprised her sister and gave her, her diploma. And they camouflaged her coming up the stage behind the principal, so when she reached for her diploma, it didn't even resonate that that was her sister. So it was really great, really great moment for everybody. I was not able to attend Helen's memorial service, but I did hear it was really special for a special purpose, person. But I do want to say I, I really recognize what you young people are doing. I commend you for your efforts, your energy and your time and your thoughtfulness on how you're doing everything. And I will be going to your Facebook page, Changing Stafford's Roads, and, and liking that page and, and joining that so I can follow what you're doing. You're making a difference and that's what life is really all about. The Ms. Mauer and Ms. Shelton and Mr. Dudenheffer all mentioned the George Washington Regional Commission meeting that we held. And over the last nine months, we've been trying to finish a memorandum of understanding, which is also referred to as an MOU. We have not gotten there yet, we are getting closer, but we did not finish it last night, so we are gonna be having a special meeting in July. We do not know the date yet, but stay tuned, that will be coming out once they have everybody's schedule. And lastly, a really fun thing, huge congratulations to Stafford High School, to their baseball team. It is the first time ever that we have won a state title in baseball ever in Stafford County history. And they beat Miles Goodwin Friday night and I just gotta tell you, it was a nail-biter down to the bitter end. It was the bottom of the seventh, two outs, two men on base, and the guy hits a run over the first baseman's head. And that was it and they won the game. And it was a tie game before that. So anyway, it was really, really fun. Mr. Snellings has asked if we could bring the baseball team over on July 2nd so we can coordinate that with the coach and even see if the players are available. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier.
Thank you. Like everyone else, I attended the Express Lane Extension Event, some other things. I went to the annual Stonebridge Homeowners Association meeting and that's whenever I learned of the, their desire to have their roads taken care of or at least taken a look at here. The other meetings were the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance and I went to the Brook Point High School graduation this year. Congratulations to all the, all the kids who graduated and particularly to the principal, Tammy Hauck, who is retiring now at the end of the school year. I also want to pass on my congratulations to Paul Milde for winning the Republican primary, for delegate. And, and I'd like to take an opportunity also to thank Bob Thomas for his service over the last couple of years as, as delegate. And I have one abstention statement to read for tonight, this evening and in the future for closed session and open session discussions, I voluntarily abstain from any discussion or vote on agenda items pertaining to the condemnation and exercise of quick-take powers in connection with the Route 1 and Courthouse Road Intersection Improvement Project because I have an affiliation with a business that is associated with the property subject to condemnation. The clerk will please note my abstention and the reason in the record today and in the record at any future meeting where the board discusses or considers this matter. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Mr. Snellings.
Well, Jack, you get to go home early tonight. That worked out? No, I think it's the last one.
It's the last one.
Very quickly, I just want to thank you guys and students for coming out again and as other board members have said, don't, don't let this go away. You know, government is, kind of moves very slow and sometimes that's a good thing. You don't want it to move too fast, but you just keep, need, keep poking us. So our next meeting is July the 2nd and then we go on a six-week break and come back in August. So, hope to see you all here. Thank you for coming. With that, report of the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report at this time.
Mr. Foley.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a scheduled board construction update that will be given by Brian Council, Deputy Director of Public Works, but I'm gonna ask our Public Works Director, Jason Towery, to come up and follow up on the conversation related to transportation to give you an update on the things that we're doing in coordination with VDOT.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Foley, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just briefly, and some of this was already covered during the VDOT presentation, but since the last meeting, we of course have been working with the, working with the VDOT and addressing these safety concerns. First off, we did go ahead and take a look at some of the individual concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. Within, within a day or two, we had our staff out driving a few of the sites that were brought up in particular and have noted some of the deficiencies at those intersections or some of the concerns and taken a look at those and then, you know, turn those over to VDOT. Of course, we reached out to VDOT, Lynn and I have been talking a lot on the phone the last two weeks, as she mentioned, she's been out of town. But we've been brainstorming a lot of different concepts and ideas and we've met internally with our staff as well to talk about ways that we, as a county, might be more efficient in, in taking some of the concerns that are brought to our attention, getting them to VDOT and then what kind of follow-up can be done. So we do have a meeting scheduled with VDOT, actually for tomorrow, that our staff is gonna be meeting one-on-one with theirs to go over some of these different ideas that we've been discussing. And then, of course, at the July 2nd meeting, as was mentioned earlier, VDOT will be here during the Infrastructure Committee meeting for, I believe, a good hour at least to have time to meet with the board and go over various concerns as well as bring forward some potential recommendations that, for things that might be able to be done moving forward. And then lastly, just within the past couple of days, we've reached out to the students who were conducting the survey and as was mentioned before, they don't, that data right now, they're, they're holding back, but they're getting ready to re-go out on a new survey, so we're gonna be working with them hopefully when they, as they collect that data and information and being able to take that and see if there's any direct input that we could take and use from that to inform, moving forward on any of the safety concerns. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Jason.
Brian.
Brian.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Brian Council, Deputy Director of Public Works for Capital Engineering and Construction. I'm here today to give you an update on several, not all, but several of the projects that the Public Works Department is, has currently underway. This thing never works the first couple times you hit it. Sherlock, you, thank you. Fire Station 14 on Shelton Shop Road, if you drive by there, you can see that the progress is ongoing. Most of the progress that's being made is on the inside, the, the large metal, pre-engineered metal building portion of it that we call it, the big gabled roof section. You'll notice that that's only gone under roof and undersiding in the last couple of weeks. However, interior finishes have been going at a pretty good pace. So it's, it is, it is coming closer to finish all the time. The, the last major item that remains is site work and that will take a couple of more months to complete. We're, there's a chance that it's gonna complete by July, the end of July. We're hoping that the contractor can do what he says he can do and, and get that thing operational by the end of July. We're crossing our fingers and doing everything we can to help them do that. Papa Road, Mountain View, if you've driven up through there, you've seen that the clearing is underway and that'll take a little bit longer before we start doing some erosion set-up control measures as well as any roadwork, but that is on schedule. Brook Road, you're not, you can't see it because you're not allowed to drive through the project right now because the road is closed, but there's been a lot of progress that the picture on the report there is indicative of. Most of the roadway that is, that is under the closure, the work now is focused along where you can see water on both sides of the road, where the two water-crossing culverts are. They're beginning to drive the piles there, the sheet piles on both sides of the road that will contain that roadway for, for stability for the, for the future. Route 1 Courthouse Road improvements, intersection improvements, this is on schedule, it's in the right-of-way acquisition phase. As you'll see later tonight, there's a consideration for the board to consider exercise of quick-take powers. These are gonna be necessary to keep the project on schedule for utility relocation as well as construction. One of the things I just wanted to point out, there'll be some building demolition associated with the utility before we can do utility relocation. And so that, that's, I think, the 711 and a couple of the project, a couple of the other buildings will probably start some sort of demolition in the fall or early spring. Belmont Ferry Farm Trail Phase 4, driving down River Road, you'll see the construction's moving from the Pratt Park entrance down towards the Route 3, Route 3 area. The last bit of work will be to take the trail underneath the bridge and around onto the downstream side and back up to connect with Route 3. the downstream side and back up to connect with Route 3. Phase 6, these have been the same updates for a couple of months now, but just to give you a progress update on where we are with the alignment, the final alignment appears that it's going to be a mix between county work, county contracted work, as well as some private development work. We're working with a developer for building some of the section along Naomi Road associated with a potential rezoning. It's not a conclusion yet, but a potential rezoning there, as well as potentially making some changes and extending the trail up Route 3 towards the old food line. We've had several meetings with the developer, several meetings with staff trying to figure this thing out, and we think we've got a solution. We just need to see if all the timing is going to work out for us to move forward in that way. If it doesn't, we'll revert back to a different plan and get it started pretty soon. Juggins Road, happy to report, Alex tells us that, for all practical purposes, the project is complete, some little cleanup around the site and some final payment, things like that, but it's gone through its final VDOT inspection, and everything appears to be ready to go. Brea Church Road Safety Improvements, still in the right-of-way plans phase, and we'll should start the acquisition process once those right-of-way plans are approved by VDOT, hopefully in July of this month or this year or next month. Route 1 Woodstock, similar project is kind of just started. We hope to have a public hearing in the fall, ninth fall of this year, start design a little bit before that and have the public hearing, get some conceptual drawings out, have a public hearing. Don't know where that's going to be held yet, but we should have that this fall. Yes, sir.
Isn't that kind of a miss, the title on it incorrect? I mean, we're really not affecting Woodstock Lane, are we? It's the road would be more effectively called Route 1 and Telegraph Road? I mean, we're given the impression where that was, one of the plans was Woodstock, but I don't think we're doing that anymore. So no big deal, just if you review that. So we don't want to give the impression that that's how it's going to go down.
Fair enough. I'll look into the exact scope and change the title of it appropriately.
Thanks.
Route 1 and Enon, this project has been, over several months, discussion about funding and scope of work and all that. I'm excited to say that FAMPO has finalized all the appropriations for this project. I think the CTV is going to vote on it either today or tomorrow at their meeting, and as soon as we get that confirmation, we will be hiring an engineer to get work on, start working on the project.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Council, after VDOT or CTV votes on that, will you please inform staff and the board as to how they voted?
Yes.
That is very exciting. Thank you.
We'll do it. Just important note there that the transportation projects listed here are the transportation projects that are currently underway in some form of design, right-of-way, or construction. There are other transportation projects that are on the CIP, but they're not mentioned here just because there's nothing going on with them, but there are numerous other transportation projects going on. Moving to a few of our utilities projects, some of our bigger, more noted projects, the Clayburn Run Interceptor, that project has, it's been winding down for a while. There's some challenges with putting in a water line that's associated with the sewer line. They're not connected, but we're going to put a new water line underneath the CSX railway, and that work is getting ready to begin, but the sewer flow has been turned over into the new sewer line, so that project is indeed closing out. The Clayburn Run Parallel Force Main, this is the force main that is going out Route 3, starting near Tylerton, all the way out to Little Falls Run wastewater treatment plant. The work in the median is now complete. The contractor is starting measures now to remove that lane closure, the left lane of the eastbound Route 3, so that should be removed, I would say, within about a week. The only part of the project that remains is about 1,000 feet of sewer just past Duff Park. Once that is done, we'll have a lot of extra capacity in that force main going out to the wastewater treatment plant. Lower Akikke Pump Station, this project, speaking of titles, this title is a little shy of what the actual work is. It should be Lower Akikke Pump Station and Gravity and Force Main Project. We bid this as two different projects, one for just the piping, one for the pump station. The consideration for award of the piping project will be on the board, consideration item will be on the next board meeting on July 2nd, and then the consideration for award of the pump station contract will be at the first meeting after the board's return in August. Last project on the update today is the Route 1 Wayside Sewer Interceptor. The work in the wayside is, all the pipe is complete. We've moved up into the Altoona and Lake Drive area behind some of the townhouses and homes up there. That work is, the clearing has been done, and the sewer line placement should begin any day. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions? Brian, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Just before we move on, I probably should ask this question to VDOT. Has the governor indicated he's ever going to replace our CTV member? Is that ever going to happen, or we just know I have one for now, forever and a day?
The lady, he had an appointment who was working her way through the system, and she was a former, or is an employee of the NTSB, and they considered her appointment a conflict of interest, so her name was withdrawn, and we're back at the beginning. Marcy Parker last night told me that they have recommended 11 or 12 names, and they cannot answer why it's going so slow.
Well, I know he's got certain criteria, so that's probably why it's going slow. But we, I mean, it's been a long time. Okay, do I have a motion for the consent agenda less items 7 and 9?
Send it.
I have a motion. I have a second. Cast your vote. Tabloid the vote. Motion carries 7 to nothing. Number 7, Ms. Mauer.
Mr. Chairman, in discussion with staff and also Mr. Dudenheffer, this was an oversight to put into the consent agenda. This is the adoption of our CIP, and, which is one of the most monumental things that we do, in addition to setting the tax rate and the budget. I also wanted to add that we had some discussion for this particular CIP with regards to Hartwood Elementary School. There was some concern in the CIP that it looked like with Hartwood remodel/rebuild that we were looking at rebuilding Hartwood Elementary School on the same site, which the majority there, although, Mr. Snellings, you weren't available, and we would like to get your opinion there, but we're very concerned about any sort of thought of rebuilding Hartwood Elementary School on the same site, given the fact that it's not on public water and sewer. So we were looking at changing Elementary School 18 slash Hartwood rebuild, and so if you see some of the recommended changes that are on here, we wanted to make sure, Mr. Snellings, A, that you had an opportunity to look at that and weigh in, and that we had an opportunity to discuss that.
Mr. Foley?
Mr. Chairman, we're handing out the one change that was suggested at the meeting, really to just be sure that you all are comfortable with the language that has been included. So I'll let you take a look at that for just a moment.
When do we have to vote on this?
It would need to be effective July 1st, so today would be the day. I would just-
I'll accept whatever the committee recommends.
So literally, we just made the change to-
Yeah, I'll accept whatever the committee recommends.
Might ask the budget staff if they could come forward and maybe just walk the board through the change that was made, so that we can be real clear.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I'm Andrea Lake, Budget Division Director. From our Fab meeting this afternoon, we discussed replacement of the Hartwood renovation rebuild with elementary school capacity, knowing that at some point in our future, we do have capacity needs within the elementary school. We have changed the footnote on this item to specify that this would be looking at the Hartwood Elementary School and the board's concern of lack of county water and sewer that's needed for that site.
And the description was changed from Hartwood Elementary rebuild/renovation to elementary school capacity, to be more broadly stated.
Yeah, I agree with what the committee said.
So, Mr. Chairman, this item is before the board for final action. You have a resolution that also includes these changes, if you're ready to proceed.
Do I have a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I am going to reluctantly make a motion, and I'll wait for a second before-
Second.
Okay. And the reason I am reluctantly making this motion is that, getting back to transportation, we are not incorporating that. We're not racking and stacking transportation, and I believe very strongly that transportation is much more important than the Public Safety Joint Training Center, with some of our dangerous roads that we have out there. However, given the, you know, the concurrence of the board during our Fab meeting, I am confident that within the next year, as we start looking at these projects, we're going to be incorporating the racking and stacking of the transportation projects as a component part of our analysis in the future.
I have a motion and a second. End of discussion. Ms. Baumke.
So I just want to reiterate a question that I asked at the Fab meeting earlier today, that I would like a report and information from the school board as it relates to Hartwood Elementary, and the compilation of when they've had to close the school because they didn't have water, or whatever their complications have been. I know that there is a report, and they have to document everything, and I would like to see that document because it will weigh heavily on what I vote on in the future. And then also, I would like to just state for the record, I am going to support the CIP, and I really appreciate all the work that staff has done on this, but I do believe that the school board needs to go back and look at why we aren't doing something, a Phase 2 of Ferry Farm. I know that they made a decision at a point in time not to do that project, but I feel that there are some, maybe, maybe, some air quality issues in that other building that they brought up a while ago, and I just feel like those need to be addressed, and I wanted to share that and make sure it was on the record. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Michelle.
I wanted to say that I, too, reluctantly support the CIP, but notice I say I'm reluctantly, but I am supporting it. I just want to make sure that I can be assured in the future to not be in the position where I feel like I am today. Last year, I met with school board members and members of school staff, because I really want to understand what is in each one of these schools, and I was very dismayed that we're sitting here at this point, still do not have that information. What I mean by that is that when you go and you build anything, we build a house, we build whatever that is, then we know what we're going to put into that house. We have an idea of what that is. We don't get an estimate that says this is how much your electrician's going to cost, this is how much your plumbing's going to cost. We know what those requirements are going to be. And so last year, I asked the staff to please share with that, so we would know what we would get for $160 million. This isn't like I'm building, you know, a shed in the back of my house. And so I was very disappointed that this year, we still have not received that information. I understand from staff and from, and I mean staff, like our staff here on the county side, that we're going to ensure that as we get closer and we get to the construction part of that project, we see that, and I want to remind people why that's important to me. And so when I first joined the board last year, then one of the things that I found out is that this beautiful little line item for $40,000 to help out the library at Brook Point High School grew magically to a $1.1 million, absolutely beautiful library, but I just wonder, was that the best use of that money? The next thing that came across was Stafford High School had a beautiful $80,000 mural. Was that in those list of things when we build things? I have no idea. And so now I look at Moncur, and it's absolutely drop-dead gorgeous. I encourage you guys to go see this elementary school. It's amazing, and it's fabulous, but I wonder about the change orders that are going through. Not seeing the change order, so that tells me one of two things. We're either designing our contract so huge that we don't have to have change orders coming through, and on a project like this, trust me, you would have a lot of them, not seeing those, and that bothers me. And so I want to make sure, and that's why I'm just asking, please, please assure us that our money, and this is my money and your money, is being used appropriately in the right way. Love to have absolutely drop-dead beautiful things, but we got to think about the opportunity costs. When we looked at our Fab today, one of our recommendations is that we be able to have that visibility of all the things that we're spending money, and this is an example of it, but I will support this CIP.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments? Mr. Cohen?
Go ahead. Well, one tags onto you, but one, I agree with Ms. Baumke. I really hope the school board would revisit the Ferry Farm issue, not from a sense of parody, but a sense of logic that seems to be missing, and I don't want to steal Mr. Cavalier's thunder, because he brought it up first. So I will defer to my colleague, and then I'll add something when he's done, if you allow, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to make it clear that we didn't take anything out of the CIP for the schools. What we did was some rewording of the Hartwood Elementary School issue, which in and of itself is an elementary school capacity issue. And because the school board took out Elementary School 18 altogether in their latest iteration of CIPs, to not address any capacity issue at the elementary school seemed a bit short-sighted. And so that's why we added in the generic capacity for elementary schools with the $25 million price tag right now, but this is all subject to change next year, and hopefully the school board will come up with a plan on exactly what Meg was saying with regard to the future of Hartwood Elementary School. Is it worth, you know, renovating? Is it worth rebuilding on that site? And I don't believe, you know, we need to put the school on well and septic because it hasn't worked out so far, so we should be looking at another site for an elementary school, and I think we're going to need capacity sooner rather than later, so we still have that placeholder in there. We just need the school board to finalize some plans for next year's CIP. And then the one last thing, and I brought this up and hammered people at the last meeting about this in regards to the air conditioning, or lack thereof, in 10 of the elementary schools for, all across the board, schools, kitchens, and the cafeterias. We're opening schools on August 12th this year, and we have 10 schools out of the 30 that do not have air conditioning. And I saw the cost for Ferry Farm Elementary was going to be a full-fledged reworking of the HVAC system for $250,000, and so we can't do that, obviously, times 10 and get it done in time for this school year. But we can do some, you know, other workarounds, and I never got any response after repeatedly asking the school staff to answer the question on what other plan they could have for this, and they just totally ignored me. Now, I know for a fact that you can get those Mitsubishi HVAC units that you mount right on the side of the wall and drill a hole through to have access. You don't have to connect it to the ductwork in there. They range about $8,000 range. So you put 10 of those in at $8,000 a pop, and that's $80,000. Not certainly even going to put a dent in the CIP, but the fact that it's not, I was never answered and provided no response to that really sort of irritates me. And, you know, I guess, I hate to say it, but I reluctantly support this CIP mostly because of that, and, you know, it's a shame that we can't get answers to the question, and that's why we're cutting them out of the policy on the CIP from now on. It's a shining example of their lack of cooperation, and, you know, we can't do things in a vacuum, and we shouldn't, because they know more about the schools than we should know, but they haven't exhibited their willingness to participate in the process. So again, you know- So, again, you know, I hope they figure something out.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cavalier. I just, when they went to the, started the discussion four years ago about starting school in the middle or early August, I kept asking people in the know, had they done a full-fledged analysis of what this would entail and how this would impact. And I kept, was being informed, yes, sure, we have. But to find 10 buildings that have inadequate air conditioning when people will be making food in the hottest time of the year is, you know, inconceivable. I just, to me, it reminds us that the prior superintendent and his team missed the boat on this. And I'm very leery of what other analysis they never did in making a decision that's going to impact a lot of people's lives. However, I will support this. I thank staff for the many footnotes to the CIP to make it and the amount of hard work they have put, done, work they have done to bring this forward. But it's, you know, this isn't on them, the fact that there wasn't really in-depth analysis across the street.
Any other comments? Just a couple of things. I think we all need to remember that the P in CIP stands for plan. It can be changed at any time. This is not in concrete. This is not the budget. I do agree with the committee's recommendation on Hartwood Elementary School. I quite frankly think it's ludicrous to rebuild a school on a site where there's no water and no sewer. But we need capacity, so we're going to have to work that out. The other comment I heard that kind of concerns me is the possibility of safety issues at Ferry Farm. If there are safety issues, I would hope the school board is bringing those safety issues to our attention. I don't think there's a member of this board that will deny money to correct safety issues. So, I would hope they hear my voice today. If they don't, I'll make sure that I communicate that. With that said...
Wait, hang on, Mr. Snellings.
Yes.
If I said safety, that's not what I meant. If you're referring to my comments, I thought I said air quality.
I heard safety, so...
Okay.
I heard safety.
Okay.
And that may be part of air quality. I don't know.
Yeah. So, no, I said, well, if I, if I said safety, I, maybe I said safety and air quality, I meant only air quality. So, I, thank you for that.
Well, I think what we need to do is find out if the air quality issue is a safety issue. Maybe that's what we need to do. So, we need to ask that question. With that said, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to one. Number nine, Mrs. Mauer. Is it number nine? No one?
Yes, it is number nine. So, the only reason I pulled this agenda item is it's the appropriation that is a result of the approval of the CIP. And I was not comfortable with approving an appropriation without approving the base document. So, with that, I will make a motion for item number nine.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. End of discussion? End of discussion? Seeing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. That concludes consent. Item number 14, County Administration Discuss Transportation Bond Referendum. Mr. Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deputy County Administrator Mike Smith will cover this item.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. May I have the computer, please? Okay. The battery seems to need replacement in our clicker. So, today, we're going to talk about the transportation bond referendum. What we're looking for today from the board is direction on the bond project list and the bond project amount. We need to have those two things in order to go to the circuit court and request then to give us permission for a special election for the bond. So, that is the lead for today.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Is this different than what is online?
No.
Okay. This is not revised. This is identical.
That is correct.
Thank you.
We were asked by one board member to have it and so, we wanted to make sure it was there for all.
Appreciate that.
I just want to remind you that the responsive transportation system is one of the board's strategic priorities. 2.1 asks us to establish clear transportation priorities. And we have done that through the comprehensive road analysis that was done by Mr. Dayton and with the public outreach. And the next step is to find a comprehensive funding strategy that establishes a dependable revenue source. One of those options is a bond referendum and that is what we will be discussing today. A part of the bond referendum will be the road widening safety improvement list. As we've talked about earlier, the wedge widening or road widening will be done in coordination with VDOT and will, they will cover the cost for about half of the cost. They'll be doing the overlay while we do the road widening. Their forces will do it, but Stafford will pay for it. Now, this will also include safety projects along those roads ahead of road widening. So, we have a set amount of money each year that we can do, that we'll be using some bond money, some cash. We can go out, and we have done this with four other road projects as part of the 2008 bond referendum, where we work with VDOT to do an analysis of the roads. And we can go out and remove trees, put up some signs and put in like delineators and those other kinds of things, look at the speed, make sure the speed is set appropriately. The four projects that we did with the 2008 bond referendum, we removed over 330 trees at a cost of $63,000. But the removal of those trees from the clear zones makes those roads a lot safer. So, even before we get to the wedge widening, we can do some safety improvement projects with this funding.
Mike, Mr. Chairman. Question on, you say Brent Point Road, Arkendale Road to end, do you mean the water end or the other way?
The end of the road. The end of the road, the shorter end.
The gravel road or the paved road?
When we get to a map, we can look at it. Because I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
This is just picture of the road widening of Andrew Chapel that was mentioned earlier. I believe the overlay has been done now. It just hasn't been striped yet. But you can see just the wedge widening adds a good bit for correction for drivers and makes it much safer. So, as I mentioned, the board needs to identify a priority project list and a bond amount in order to request circuit court to order a special election. We had a CIP work session and we discussed that there's a capacity of between $50 and $70 million for transportation bond. The board asked us to bring three options back to the board to consider. We will present those different projects. The board can pick one option or any combination of the projects and a bond amount that will accomplish those projects. We will then develop an engagement plan to communicate information related to the projects and the proposed bond referendum. And we will bring that back on August 20th for the board to approve so we can move forward with the engagement plan. As I mentioned, the comprehensive road study considered safety and congestion issues. The final report identified 10 major construction projects and 35 roads eligible for the safety improvement projects with the road widening. The 10 major construction projects in the study have a total cost of about $180 million. These are very preliminary costs, but those are the costs in the study. And we may not be able to achieve that, the number of projects with the funding of $70 million, but we have come up with three options that we'll be going through. All right. Just a real quick, talking about funding sources, of course, the bond referendum will be 50 to 70 million. That will be important because in order to leverage state funds, both revenue sharing, smart scale and any federal funding, you need to have some skin in the game. So, the county has to have some money in order to leverage those other funds. We also have a transportation impact fee. However, the roads on the study list are not eligible for the impact fees. Impact fees can only go towards future degradation, not degradation that's already happened. We talked about the surplus operating funds and we anticipate about a million a year that will go towards those safety road widening projects and some of the other projects so that the board has the opportunity to mix those funds in with the bond funds. And we still have the positive results of operation. We expect about a million dollars a year from that. And the vehicle license fee, the board could decide to increase that fee and send it towards transportation. And of course, there's always general fund revenues. As I mentioned, the leveraging is the important part of this. We have to have some skin in the game. We have to have some county funds if we want to leverage other funds. So, the major road project list, there were 10 major road projects. I won't go through the list of them, but even with leveraging other funds, the completion of all 10 projects with $50 million isn't practical. So, we've come up with some options to reduce those projects. Yes, sir.
Mike, just to be clear, there were more than 10 road projects, but these were the ones that, based on Keith's analysis, were the top 10.
Right.
So, there are, we looked at all the roads.
Yeah, we looked at all the roads, but these are the final 10 projects that were recommended in the study.
Based on his objective analysis of all the roads?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, just...
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Some positive aspects, as I mentioned, the possibility of leveraging funds. Garrisonville, Butler and Shelton Shop may have the best opportunity to score well for smart scale, although Butler did not receive smart scale funding with our round two submission. Onville may be able to leverage federal land access program money in cooperation with Quantico. And Leland may be able to leverage some commuter choice program funding. And so, we're putting in an application for the commuter choice now. Route 1 in Enon is funded largely with smart scale, which bond funds could be used to cover any funding gap. So, that road is included as well, even though it's mostly funded. If there is a funding overrun, it would be nice to have that flexibility. The improvement to major thoroughfares with congestion and accidents, Butler, Garrisonville, White Oak Road and Shelton Shop, those are all heavily traveled roads and it would be very important.
Mike, Mr. Dudenheffer and Ms. Baumke.
The item, the one that talks about smart scale, that isn't, I mean, if we put more money into the, or as proposed into those projects, our chance of getting state, additional state funding increases, doesn't it? So, we, based on prior, Garrisonville, Butler and Shelton Shop might be likely candidates. But if, again, if we come up with more money and can make the projects with the state look more attractive, there's a good chance we will add to our list of projects that smart scale fund. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. Also, we need to remember that the smart scale funding is out quite a bit. The last round was for 24 and 25. And so, basically, our 10-year window for this bond, the first half is used up. And so, there's only a finite amount of money in those last five years that we'll be vying for. And so, we have to make sure that we don't put all the projects in the last five years and expect smart scale because that won't be available in those years.
So, that was my, yeah, so that was my question. I was just wondering if you could remind people, especially like Ms. Shelton and Tom Cohen weren't on the board when we did round two of smart scale. And just so the community understands why we didn't receive funding for those projects. But that's what Mr. Dudenheffer asked as well. We didn't have enough money on those projects.
Yeah, that was one of the major reasons. We didn't have enough money to leverage. And a big ask for a project that the county doesn't put skin in the game in, even if it scores well and some of the other things, a lot of times, that won't get it over the edge.
Correct. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, the negative considerations, out of the 10 projects, Morton and Layhill are relatively small sections of connector road that could be improved with turn lanes instead of through lane throughout, a third through lane. That's one consideration if you wanted to reduce the number of projects and the amount. And Layhill is complicated with intersection with Route 1 where VDOT would require substantial improvements with very high costs. Anytime you touch Route 1, that cost is probably going to elevate. And I don't believe that cost was included in the road study. White Oak, Garrisonville Road and Mountainville Road estimates are higher than the revenue sharing match maximum that will result in requirement to use other leveraged funds or smart scale. So, basically, those projects are more than 20,000. You can get five, or 20 million, you can get 5 million a year from revenue sharing, but you can only have a maximum of 10 million per project. So, anytime you go over 20 million on a project, that cost is either going to have to be county cost or we're going to have to look for smart scale or some other type of funding outside of revenue sharing. I just mentioned the smart scale funding comes in 2026, the next round. And so, that will push those projects that we do try to get smart scale on to the last five years of the 10-year CIP. Butler Road improvements have some significant concerns that will be addressed shortly. Okay. Option one. Option one includes all 10 roads plus the wide, the road widening safety projects with the exception of Layhill, Morton and White Oak Road. So, Butler Road is included. Could you go to the next slide? And we can go back and forth as you want. Let's go to the map first. So, one more slide.
Just, just real quick, Mike.
Sure.
Would you outline to the board the complications we're discovering at Butler Road?
Yes, we'll get to that in just a second.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, this is the map. The dark red projects are the major construction projects. The orange-yellow projects are the road widening safety improvements that would be included in the bond. And those are listed on the left in the key. The numbers associated are map numbers. They're not priority numbers. They're just simply map numbers. Okay. Well, as mentioned, we did some additional research into the Butler Road project. We reviewed the smart scale application that we submitted in 2016. The estimated cost of that project at the time was 25.6 million, which is higher than the 18.9 million estimated in our comprehensive study. We also checked the VDOT records for their intersection project and they did the Butler Road intersection project. And they did some ground penetrating radar of the Union Cemetery. And they found that there are several unmarked graves in that cemetery, some of which are right up next to the road. When we talked to VDOT, they actually said when they put the sidewalk in, they hit some footstones of graves. So, widening that road at any point will be quite complicated.
I've been told by a member of the cemetery foundation, that cemetery, by the way, is not owned by that church. It's owned by the state. But that is a slave cemetery that's out next to the road. And then, on the other side, if you go the other way, you're going to have to take the church.
Right.
So, it's not a...
Well, you only take half of the church because it goes right down the middle of the sanctuary.
Just half.
Just half.
Yes. So, staff recommends working with FAMPO to have a star study done on this section rather than, we don't believe that we have the staffing to handle this complicated issue. Can you go to the next slide?
Yeah. Just, just real quick, this, this area has been studied many times. And before they did the Falmouth interchange improvements that were done just a few years ago, there were all kinds of proposals for bypasses, for going through the church parking lot, going underneath the church. I mean, I heard some pretty, pretty crazy plans and none of them were cost-effective and viable for the historical nature of the area. So, I can tell you, I, I meant to bring it up last night at FAMPO just to introduce it, but I think we need to do a comprehensive study of alternative ways to improve the traffic here because it's pretty obvious this is going to be, this is like a bridge too far for us unless, you know, we have an earthquake and the church falls apart or something. It's a...
I agree. And this graphic simply shows the level of disturbance. And as you can see, as Ms. Baumke mentioned, it basically goes right through the sanctuary of the church. And like I said, for this reason, staff would not recommend option number one. But we wanted to present it because it was part of the comprehensive study. Option number two does not include Layhill Road or Morton Road similar to option one and it substitutes White Oak Road for Butler Road. And once again, White Oak Road is number one because it's number one for the map list. It's not a priority. It just went in the place of Butler Road. The numbers don't have priorities. And we show possible funding for each of these road projects. And then, this is a possible future CIP.
Mike, let me back up a second. At option two, number six.
Yes.
Route 1, Enon Road. You've got it listed as Falmouth-Hartwood District. None of that improvement is in Hartwood. It ends at 95, correct?
Right. It's just a butts up against Hartwood.
It's a butts up against, yeah, but it's not in Hartwood.
All right. We'll make sure that we...
Yeah, that's right, Gary, because those 9,000 cars are on the rest of your road.
Pretty well. I wave at them and...
So, this is a possible future CIP. It lays out some where we might do the road. And the roads are laid out more on the funding sources and what we could possibly get from it. White Oak Road, I'm not sure that it would qualify well for smart scale, so we put it in early. It'll be using revenue sharing and bond money. Where the projects like Shelton Shop and Garrisonville Road, we moved out so that we could get some smart scale in years five through 10. But this is all just ideas. We'll come back to the board in the future if the bond referendum passes and then we'll work with the board... future if the bond referendum passes, and then we'll work with the board to set priorities and set the timing. This is just to give you an idea of how we could possibly do it.
Mike, is, is option two the sixty million dollar plan?
Option two, yes. Can you go back one slide?
So, the original one was the fifty million dollar?
The original one was the fifty million. If you look under the bond funded, you can see at the bottom it totals sixty million dollars.
Okay, there we go. All right.
And those, that's how the, each project would be funded with bond and then with all of the other funded money.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And then, once again, this is a map, and it looks like Brett Point Road goes all the way down to the water.
At the park.
At the park. Right, well, that's pretty close to the water. And option three just includes Lay Hill and Morton Road, and that has a price tag of a seventy million dollar bond. It gives you the most flexibility to use money on all these roads and allows you to put those roads into the project list. The requirement is to have a project list and a bond amount, and then that project list goes in on the question for, and then you can use the bond money on those projects only as you move forward. Like I said, all of the road widening project lists will be on there as well as the major construction projects. Can you... This is, once again, a possible future CIP. The map, and then this is an example bond referendum question. As you can see, we would ask to use general obligation bonds and our maximum amount of X dollars, depending on what the board supplies. We would have a listing of large road construction projects, and we would list out all those projects, and then we'd have road widening and safety improvement projects, and we would list all of those roads as well. It does not give the section of roads we would, that, like we have on our maps, we would put that in the public information, but it would not go on the bond question list.
Okay, Mike, just for the public who might be listening, how long is the bond money? I mean, this bond is for, what, ten years? Is that correct?
It's good for eight years and can be extended for an extra two, for a total of ten years.
Okay, and is, if, for instance, if we went in for the max amount, if due to circumstances we couldn't complete that, maybe because of capacity, debt capacity, or any other specific item, we're not in violation of anything if for some reason we can't complete the whole list?
No, and you wouldn't take a bond out for-
Right.
Whatever the full amount is. You would do it project by project or a couple of projects at a time so that you didn't incur that debt service until you needed those funds.
Right, but we've, we've done the study, right, that talks about our next ten years of debt capacity we have. The question may come up of whether we can afford that debt capacity or whatever, but there's no obligation because we passed a bond referendum to, that we, we need to rush at the end and get them all done.
No, it'll be the intent to get all those projects done with the planning, but we don't know what the future brings as far as-
And the, and, but we are limited by the list of what projects we can spend it on. So, it's all, it was in the previous bond referendum, in the initial one, people challenged whether we would spend the money wisely and where we said, and when we did the second one, we were very specific in the roads that we would look at, and we're proposing to do the same thing here.
Correct. It would be limited to the roads on the list.
So, when people vote in the voting booth and they see the list, that list is, that once it's voted on and approved is set in stone?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions, because I'd asked Jason a while ago, not to throw him under the bus, but the, just, the idea of putting in the bond just for the road widening and the safety aspect, and I was told that, you know, to do so, we need the banks and et cetera like a specific list. But what I'm understanding here is that we put the seven items, say, on option one or whatever option we look at, and then you throw on the other twenty things and it's okay. So, it's all right to put the, all the items in the road widening if we want?
Yes, you have to list all the projects that you may use bond funding on.
Right, and so, in theory, you know, year two, the, the board could either A, take a good chunk of this, whatever dollar amount that we've said, and throw it into the road widening, or B, take the money away from road widening and put it into one of their other roads, correct?
Correct.
Because it's totally their decision.
Gives the board flexibility. If they want to advance the road widening safety improvement projects with bond money, they can advance that.
Right.
If the cash dries up from the surplus that we have right now, and we don't have surplus in the transportation tax, but the bond still, the board still feels those safety projects are more important, they can use that bond money on those projects.
Which is basically what I was saying.
Yes, sir.
So, and then my other question would be, and this is just from me when I do organizing of something, if I have an option one, I always have a one A or one B, one C, so that if one A is deemed, you know, not doable, we already have something in fallback. So, since you, you've come to the table saying that the number one item that we've racked and stacked, Butler Road is problematic at best, so we throw that out, so that rather than having a fallback of something under the fifty million, that negates the entire fifty million discussion, we jump up to sixty or seventy. And that, that's basically where we're at, right?
No, like I said in the, earlier, that the board can take any of these and make adjustments to any of them, and so you don't have to go with any of the options that we brought. You could change. We just need a project list and a bond amount.
Right, by today.
Correct. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So-
Mr. Chairman, I just, just wanted to point out that time is of the essence, so that's the only reason that we've, we have pushed as hard as we could to get you to this point so that you would have the opportunity to make a decision to move this forward. So, hopefully, the board's not thinking that we're putting you in a, in a bad spot here. This is at your direction.
Now, this is, let me make sure we all understand. You have to have a decision today. July second will not work, correct?
July second.
No, we, we have to bring something back to you July second for a resolution to go to the circuit court, and so we have to have-
Has to be approved July second.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thanks for clarification.
Is this fifty million dollar number the minimum?
The board can choose whatever they would like to choose. We, when we had our work session, we, the board directed us to come back with a fifty million, a sixty million, and a seventy million dollar option.
But just adding on to Mr. Cohen's discussion about option one and the fact that you don't recommend including Butler Road under any circumstances, it looks like. So, if you knock out the nine point four five million, or the eighteen, yes, twice, so eighteen point nine million, nineteen million off of the fifty, you'd still have a thirty-one million dollar bond referendum on that list without Butler Road.
It would be, yeah, a little over forty because of the nineteen million dollars for Butler Road, half was revenue sharing and half was bond money. So, you would drop your bond down to forty million.
So, it'd be four, so option one theoretically, I mean, for all intents and purposes, we're knocking out Butler Road on this as an option. So, we'd come back with another option that doesn't include Butler Road as the new option one at forty million.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and also, Onville Road is actually in my district, not Falmouth on option one. You got to listen correctly to the other ones.
Oh, sorry.
But I, I think you just got too much Falmouth in there anyhow, so you just kept writing Falmouth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Okay, so, I don't know if we're going to be able to slice and dice this tonight, but we might. I guess the question I have for the board is, would you be willing to have a work session on the different road projects at the July sixth, second meeting and then pass a resolution at the evening session?
So, your proposal is we have a work session in the afternoon prior to the three o'clock meeting?
Right.
Better do it in the morning.
Well, or maybe we could take it up at infrastructure, depending on what else is on the agenda.
Well, infrastructure doesn't have the real authority to pass anything. Still have to come from the board.
It would be a work session for the whole board.
How does the board feel about that? Maybe a work session at eleven AM on the second to decide which projects and how much money and where it's coming from? Does anybody have any objections to that? Mr. Foley, how about you? Is that acceptable?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's fine. We, we have, we have a important work session item on healthy growth that we're going to have to bring back to you for some important direction, but we can try to work through the process there.
Okay.
And I guess I'd like to know where the rest of the board members are, because as Tom said, we don't really have a fifty million dollar option without Butler Road. If you take Butler out.
But the way I understood it from Mr. Smith is that we can pick and choose. In other words, we can move other projects into that option one, is that correct, to bring it up to fifty million?
Mr. Chairman, you all can, can slice and dice this how you like. The one thing that's important is that there are, there's a strategy around the funding in terms of what's realistic that takes a little more analysis by Mike, and that's why we kind of have to do some scenarios.
If you took Butler Road out, but you wanted to maintain a fifty million dollar bond, you could add Lay Hill and Morton back in, and then you would just have Butler and White Oak out of option one.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I will, if I may, so when Leland Station was originally built, just so everybody knows, there was a proffer in there that related, and I don't know all the specifics, maybe somebody from staff might, because I wasn't a part of that, but there was supposed to be a four-lane road over the railroad tracks going down to Lay Hill Road. Maybe you were on the planning commission then?
No, I just-
Yeah, so, but then they went into bankruptcy, and I'm not sure how that proffer, if they ever lived up to that proffer, but the county was then supposed to build part of that road.
Ms. Mallor?
So, I kind of look at this from the perspective of impact, and if we're going to, you know, go through all the expense of doing a bond referendum, we're looking at it from a ten-year perspective. A sixty million dollar bond referendum does sound large in magnitude, but it's six million dollars a year, and in spending six million dollars a year on transportation projects, very important transportation projects versus, let's say, a new public facility, what we're not getting, which we do with new public facilities, is the operational tail that comes with it. So, when I see six million dollars, and, and I'm, I'm looking at the tax rate adjustments, which I'm surprised, quite frankly, at the impact on the tax rate, the, the two percent to the three percent and, and whatnot, not all of that is coming at one time. It's, it's almost something that theoretically we could absorb, but especially because we don't have the operational tail that we do with a new high school or a new elementary school or, you know, a training facility or a new courthouse. And so, so six million dollars a year, and, and again, that's, that's simple math, doesn't seem that extreme to me versus five million dollars a year. And, and quite frankly, what concerns me about picking road projects is we went through a very, very diligent, you know, racking of stacking with the analysis and everything that goes into that, and, and to make it political by picking and choosing makes me incredibly concerned about the, the methodical process, usurping the methodical process that we went through. And so, I, you know, I will, I will acquiesce to what my other board members are looking at, but I looked at this two weeks ago, and, and quite frankly, I'm ready to make a decision tonight.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Shelton?
You're here, Ms. Mallor. You're here. And so, I look at it from, I've got Acquahia. There's not one damn road on this list for Acquahia.
Except for road widening.
Okay, except for road widening. And so, but, but what I'm going to say is you're absolutely right. The reason we did this is we wanted to take out the politics of us making decisions and look at where do we spend Stafford's money the best place we can. So, I look at this list, the biggest list. I'm sad we can't do all of them. We can't. I, I, I'm pleased that with our two-cent increase that we now have some capacity to be able to address what frankly, the number one issue in Stafford County. Yes, I have the same constituents that like their little bitty roads and they want to reserve the rural character, but that's not the majority of the people in Stafford. And so, I just have one question, Mr. Smith. And so, this is my, my district, right? And so, we have a star study going on Route one right now, and the intent of that star study is to look at multimodal capabilities to move things around. In addition, there may be some opportunities that come out to improve the traffic flow on Route one. It could be a miracle. I'll accept that if that happens. But it makes me wonder, where is that money going to come from if something comes out of that at the end of the year? And that's along with the hydrological study that we're doing on Brook Road. We started that, and it's a long, you know, seasons-long study to look at how does the actual water flow impact Brook Road? What is the opportunity there? What if something comes out of that? And so, my concern is to make sure that we want all of this. I mean, I want more than what we have right now, but I want to make sure as well that we have the flexibility to address whatever happens that we haven't planned for. And so, those are the things I'm looking at at the Acquahia District. Who knows what other issues may happen in the future? So, talk to me about what that flexibility looks like because I, too, am ready to vote tonight.
Well, the, for the transportation fund, we projected a certain amount of money that will come back and will be nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars, give or take, over our operating expenses. That funding has been built into the CIP to help pay, along with the bond money and everything else. The one million dollar that the PRO, the positive results of operation, that the board has decided that each year it will put to the transportation fund, is not something that we can rely on, and so we can't really put it into CIP, but if the board decides to continue to do that each year, that funding will be available to do those other types of projects.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, and, and one, last year when Ms. Sheldon advocated for a road bond, I supported her in that, and so, and when we went to our retreat, I, I went there thinking that we were going to go and put a road bond on the ballot this November. A couple of things that concern me about the larger dollar amounts is that, quite honestly, since getting, before I was on this board, but since I've been on this board, I've been concerned about our debt and paying down our debt, and so I'm leery of doing that, of just adding to it. Secondly, I just, I find the irony that the, the main reason we can have this discussion and move forward with a road bond is because of the tax rate, and certain individuals were so adamantly against the tax rate, but now we're using the benefit of that tax rate for this project, and I, I just find that irony enjoyable. I go back to what the young adults of changing Stafford's roads talk about. Potholes, sight distances, mirrors, which in theory is five million dollars in each of these plans for a total of eight million, or ten million, but it's not guaranteed. And I know it's not technically guaranteed by the, the one million dollars each, each year if there's carryover, but to me, there's two focuses here. One is on the safety aspects, and I fully know what, some people are going to bash me and say that these major road programs are for safety, and I get that, but this other aspect, which I think we can deal with in a more timely and more appropriate fashion, that's where I think we should be putting a large amount of our attention in doing so. And so, I, you know, I'm in favor of the fifty dollar, fifty million dollar price tag. I understand that the concerns about Butler Road, and if we take that out and go to the next one on our rack and stack and push it up, that, that would be logical and sensible and do it in an appropriate manner, but I, I just, the, the larger the dollar amount that we go in this, the more it is problematic, and so I support, so that somebody doesn't slur me, I support doing a road bond as I did when Ms. Shelton tried to do it last year, and she was dissuaded in that effort. And I supported it this February, and Ms. Bomke and I were riding back in the car together, and we lamented about this. So, I, before anybody decides to cast dispersions and make Stafford like DC and smear people's character, I'm saying I do support having a road bond, but my focus should be, is that we should be focused on safety and understanding full well that we can address some of these safety things quicker than we can the larger ones, which anybody who's been around the courthouse project on six-thirty and has- courthouse project on 630 and has paid attention from the design and acquisition and building phase know that they will take a while to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Let me remind everyone, we've got a long way to go and a short time to get there. We're not even through unfinished business, and we've got a huge closed session. So, I'll take all comments, but I just wanna make that reminder. Ms. Bomke?
So, let me ask Mr. Smith a question regarding Butler Road. Not willing to give up on that yet. I understand the concerns with the cemetery and the church. What if we just carried the additional lanes from the YMCA around the bend down to where we have complications?
You would, that's an option we could look at. So, you would basically maintain four lanes till you got to the intersection. We talked to VDOT about that, and the way the configuration is with the turn lanes would be easier if I had a graphic, but I don't, that, they didn't believe that it would work very well, because the way they have those turn lanes configured, they'd have to pull up the median and move it, and it still wouldn't allow, coming off of 17 onto Butler, it wouldn't allow a free flow of two lanes to come across, and so you'd still have the same backup going up 17. Because that's the real problem, is getting all that traffic through there. If they have to bottleneck down and then come back out, there doesn't seem to be as much traffic problems in front of the Y. It's more the bottleneck because of, by the church.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I get...
Mr. Dudenheimer?
Well, it should come no surprise where I stand on this, and I'm ready to vote right now that I think that the residents of Stafford County deserve the right to weigh in on the number-one problem in the county. Casting dispersions, as one board member said, is, the dispersions are his comments about people who oppose tax increases for pay raises, especially his own pay raise. So, we need to, we need to do, we need to give this to the public and let them make a decision. We've had people killed on Shelton Shop Road. I mean, what do we need to do here? We're cutting back. To me, this is the most important thing that we're dealing with and will deal with this year and many others, and I will, I will work hard to make sure it gets passed. And I think I have an army of kids out there who also said that. So, if we start whittling away at how much we're gonna spend, I think that's a slap in the face to all of those. We spent, what, 16 months, 14 months, working on this study to try and make it logical, to make it objective, instead of all the politics, and that's what we hear, politics. So, the public deserves a right to vote on this thing, not to have politicians stand up here and now wanna whittle away because of some false pretenses.
Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other, I'll entertain any questions, because we're gonna have to have a motion before we continue the discussion.
I have a question for Mr. Smith. On option one, if you do take out Butler Road and add back in Lay Hill and Morton Road, what is the cost of that? What would be the new cost?
What would be the other options?
No, no.
That's option three.
It isn't, because it doesn't include White Oak. I said Lay Hill and Morton Road in place of Butler Road.
Oh, right, right.
So, it's a new option. 1A, we'll call it that.
1A, like Tom said.
Okay, well, if you look at option three and you take out...
Okay, stop.
Let Mike do it.
Okay, so, so for Lay Hill and Morton, you're looking at about $10 million in bonds. And for Butler Road, it was about nine and a half million dollars in bonds. So, you would be, you could make it work with 50 million, you could add those two, and you might have to try to get a little more revenue sharing.
So, it would essentially be a wash if you took out Butler and replaced Butler with Lay Hill and Morton?
Correct.
So, that's what you're telling me?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, the only thing that would be lacking would be White Oak Road, along with both.
Any other questions?
I have one more question.
Ms. Sheldon?
Just quickly, so I don't have to go through this. So, if we did that, which roads would we now be disparaging and not taking them in account on options two and three? Just go quickly, if we went with that. White Oak is one.
So, option one would have Butler Road out and White Oak Road out, but all the others.
Right.
Option two would have Lay Hill, Morton, White Oak in, White Oak in, Lay Hill, Morton, and Butler out. Option three would have just Butler out.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. You said option one would take out Butler and?
White Oak Road. Because Lay Hill and Morton would replace Butler.
Right.
It's not in there.
Right, right.
Correct.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adopt option number three, and then direct the staff to go forward and prepare for a final vote at our next meeting.
I have a motion to adopt option three. Do I have a second? Hearing none, the motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for what I'm gonna term as the new option 1A, which is option one with the elimination of Butler Road and with the addition of Lay Hill and Morton Roads.
Second?
What's the total on that?
It's 50.
50 million.
I have a motion. Who made the second? Ms. Bomke? Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes five to two. Next item on the agenda, still under unfinished business, economic development. Consider rescinding or amending a memorandum of understanding with Acquahia Capital LLC associated with Acquahia Town Center. Gentlemen, 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 gentlemen.
I kinda, White Oak Road, that's in Tom's district, he doesn't want it.
That's good, we're good.
Don't threaten me, Mark.
Mr. Holden?
Thank you, Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen of the Board. So, I'm coming back to you with a resolution R-19186 that would amend the MOU with Mosaic Partners with the language that we discussed last time at your board meeting, as well as a resolution that would rescind the agreement in its entirety. Next slide, please. Just a reminder, on June 4th, we discussed the amendment to the MOU. There were four outstanding items that we could not come to consensus with, with Mosaic, and I have a slide on each of those. At that same meeting, there was the request by Supervisor Cavalier to address potholes in the development as well. So, I have one slide on that, and I would like to go through each slide so you can understand the differences of where we are.
Mr. Chairman, I'll save, I'll save some presentation time, and I drove through this morning, the potholes were taken care of. I think that's an OBE issue.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I'm gonna move on.
So, also, I should add that the chairman asked, and we have a representative from Mosaic Partners here as well, if you'd like to have questions and answers. Item one, the staff language was requested to remove or demolish, and demolish the site that was developed up front there. It was proposed there'd be a Rite Aid, or initiate a building permit for the site and have construction done in 18 months. Mosaic's proposal was that alternatively to add screening to the site within 120 days, or initiate a building permit. Next slide, please.
Question, Ms. Mauer?
Yeah, and what would be easier for me is if Ms. Shelton and Mr. Cavalier would kinda give me their opinion on the either-or as we go through them, if you don't mind. Mr. Snowings, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'll be okay with that.
Okay, so, can we go back to number one? So, there's your either-or. There was what we discussed at our last meeting, this is what they've come back with. Not my district, this isn't something I'm passionate about. I would like to get your impression on this.
Well, I think maybe we might be putting a little bit on the spot.
Sure, am I? Well, and if you say you wanna hear the whole presentation, then you can tell me to pound sand.
Mr. Cavalier says he's prepared to answer.
Okay.
And I'm prepared to answer. On item number one, it's not the deal breaker for me.
Okay.
And so, and when I say for me, I'm really talking about my district. I don't get a lot of complaints about the rubble. I do get complaints about the screening and the way that the maintenance of the screening, as well as the mowing, in addition to missing stop signs, other things like that, potholes related to the site, not particularly about the destruction of this particular Rite Aid building.
So, you're okay with the mosaic language?
I am.
Okay.
I am also, although I would prefer that we stick with the, I think the rest of the cleanups were gonna be within 90 days. Everything else on the site, was that the language that we had agreed upon, 60 to 90-day timelines?
I think each item had a different day period, but 90...
Each item.
190 was the minimum, as I recall.
I would prefer to see 90 days on this item.
Agreed.
For the screening?
For the screening, yes.
Yes.
In the mosaic language, so restrict that a little further.
I don't mean, it's just easier.
Okay.
Number two was the securities language. Staff recommended that the county securities be in the form of a letter of credit or cash equivalent. Mosaic asked that it be "or bond reasonably acceptable" by the county, with other language explaining that the securities provided shall at all times include securities in the form of a letter of credit or cash. So, again, staff's recommendation was to provide a little more, hate to use the word "security," but assurance of the ability to have the necessary funds to prepare the sites in its conditions.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Bomke?
So, I'd like an opinion from the county attorney, because typically, you know, in these kinds of transactions, you have cash or a letter of credit. What is "or bond reasonably acceptable" to the county? Are you okay with that language?
Supervisor Bomke and Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, this is not really a legal issue, in that staff's preference is to have the letter of credit or the cash equivalent. Having the bond is a different mechanism for financing, so it's not so much of a legal issue. However, I will note that Mosaic's additional language with regards to maintaining the actual securities via letter of credit or cash equivalent was to, in response to staff's concern, to be able to clean up the site. So, Mosaic's language is directly responsive to staff's directs concern, however, it's not, the staff brought forward Mosaic's language compared to the language of board-directed staff on the last meeting. So, not really a legal consequence, but it's just another option for bonding or financing the improvements.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Sheldon.
I'm sorry, would you remind me of the risks that was associated between the two, between the bond and the letter of credit? I don't remember the rationale why it was less of a risk for us to have a letter of credit versus a bond in this particular situation.
It's a matter of getting the actual cash out of the bond security. All right, it's rather, and I'm treading on, quite frankly...
On a letter of credit, you can draw on it immediately. It's a much more accessible legal financial instrument.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cavalier.
You did agree to have Mosaic available to answer questions. I think this is probably a good one for them.
So, the bond is, because we have an existing site plan on the site, so any developer can put up cash or a letter of credit for the erosion and sediment issues, and then they post the rest of it as a bond to secure the site plan. In this case, it's an extra $400,000. And I think like what the county attorney said is, we tried to address, all we heard from staff that was, the issue was that the site always have enough cash or easy to pull a letter of credit to be able to put it in good condition and compliance with the law. So, we proposed this language to do that. The site plan that we have on file right now is for an outdated, we know that it's not gonna be that shopping center. It's outdated. We happen to have a bond posted of an extra $400,000 or $500,000 there, and to just force us to have an extra $500,000 cash, because if you get a letter of credit, you just have to put the cash in the bank. It's the same thing as giving it to the county. It's very onerous, and the site plan is outdated. It's just, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And that's really all the issue is about. We offered to do the cash or letter of credit that could always put it in condition and compliance with the law, and that's all the issue is about.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, I do think it'd be good to have you hear both sides of this issue, because there's things that go beyond just the guarantee. They have to do with whether the site is abandoned eventually, and whether we actually able to collect on the other things going on at the site. And so, I think Mr. Smith could speak to that from a development perspective in terms of our regulations, and the difference between a letter of credit and a bond under those circumstances.
Right. State code allows letter of credit, cash, or a bond, and so that's why all of our developers are allowed to use a bond. In this instance, with the agreement, a letter of credit, as stated by Ms. Bomke, would give us more accessibility to that. Since the site plan is, as Mr. Sodi stated, old and probably not gonna be built in that way, it'd be tough to get a bond pulled. $600,000 of that bond is for stormwater, and much of the stormwater pipe and stormwater ponds are not in a condition where if it was abandoned, they would be suitable, and the county may end up responsible through our responsibilities of DEQ and our TMDL to have to go in and fix those. And so, we felt that it was in the best protection of the county to have something that could be pulled easily in case the site was abandoned.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think it's just important to clarify that the issue here is not just the vehicle for that. It happens to do with if in three years the agreement is not achieved, and that site is abandoned, we will have obligations to spend significant amount of money to ensure stormwater requirements are met.
So, my question would be then, are those funds, if it's $600,000, gonna be sufficient, or is the county gonna have additional liability in excess of the $600,000?
Well, one of the requirements was to get an updated estimate as well.
Okay.
And so, that's what we had put into the agreement.
It's like a debate. But our notwithstanding language addresses that, you know, it addresses that it be put back in the condition to comply with any requirements there. If you make it for the site plan, first off, the site plan doesn't need to be there right now anyway. We would just pull the site plan and then wait to do it for an appropriate site plan. I don't even think the language protects you in the way that you wanna be protected. I think the notwithstanding language, I mean, you guys could comment on it, I think it addresses your concern.
I'm not gonna allow a debate. We're here, and no fault to yours, but we invited you to answer questions, so we're not gonna get into a debate with you. This is between Mr. Holden's Department and legal. Ms. Mauer?
Yeah, so when I read the notwithstanding language, am I, am I to understand that we're gonna have the bond based upon the site plan, and the notwithstanding language is the cash to restore the site as Mike would like? Is that what I'm reading? So, to restore the site, it would be in the cash or the letter of credit, so that amount. So, let's just say, you know, the site plan required a bond of $600,000, but to restore the site, as Mr. Smith had indicated, is $300,000, so we meet our DEQ requirements. From what I'm reading in this language, and I'm not an attorney, is 300 in the bond and 300 in the letter of credit? Is that what's going on with this language?
I don't think it says, I'm not an attorney either. I don't think it says that.
And that's what I'm asking.
Because the language defaults back to the county or state law or ordinance regulations, I would look to staff for the substantive piece of that. I think from a legal standpoint, there is validation to that part, but the question is what the standard is, and that would be a substantive question for staff.
Okay. All right.
So what is staff's position on this, then?
I think Mr. Smith needs to...
What was that?
If I'm reading this based upon what your desire is, and what I heard, the ultimate goal that we're trying to get to is should they walk away and we end up with this property back, that we would be responsible to restore the site to a certain condition in order to not violate our environmental requirements?
Correct.
I understood that correctly?
Yeah. And the condition of the pipes under the pavement that is half demolished, I'm not sure what that condition is.
Okay.
But if we had to replace all that pipe in order to meet the stormwater requirements...
Right.
That's where that large amount of money comes in, which would be replaced in a new site plan.
Okay.
But if there's no new site plan, we couldn't leave it as is, because...
Okay. But the way I'm reading this language, and the way I'm understanding the conversation, and so I'm looking to understanding this language, is that, let's say theoretically the site plan, we have a $600,000 bond, but we're going to need $300,000 to put the site to a condition to where we're not violating law. The way I read this is 300 could go towards bond, but 300 would have to be in cash or letter of credit.
Right. And it's that engineering study we would have to do to understand...
What that second number would be.
What that number difference is.
And that is where you are having difficulty.
Correct.
Okay. Peace. I just wanted to make sure I understood the complexity of the situation.
So where do we stand on number two?
I looked to colleagues.
Is everybody, where do we stand on number two?
This is, from my perspective, listening to what you're saying, it seems like that the less risky or the best place for the county would be, in this situation, would be to not have to be concerned about a bond. And so I would think that if we went with the letter of credit or cash equivalent, that it would meet our perspective. Is that not true, Mr. Smith? Because it sounds like the issue is truly around the bond. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Staff language is what you're leaning towards?
Yes, actually, it is. I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, it is. Sorry.
Okay. Is everybody in agreement with that? Mr. Cavalier?
Well, that sort of differs to what Rashida just said. So Rashida thought that it was okay to have the Mosaic language. Now David's here, so maybe David would like to weigh in and settle this for us.
But I'm sorry, I don't think...
Mr. County Attorney.
David, you've been asked a question by Mr. Cavalier.
Okay. We've gotten a couple of different opinions, at least on this. Mosaic language versus staff language relative to the bond requirement, and whether or not we add that to the mix here, versus just a letter of intent or cash. And I think Ms. McLendon seemed to indicate that legally that was fine. Staff would have to do a lot of work and research into seeing exactly what this would be, is, which didn't rule out the Mosaic language, then. So my question to you, sir, then, is which of the two are you most comfortable with? I hate to ask an attorney an opinion, but I think in this point, we're to the point that if we don't do this, then is there a middle ground that we can reach, too? Because I want to get this solved, and I want to get it solved today, but I want to make sure we're doing it right and fair.
Supervisor Cavalier, the language you brought before you, staff can make either language work. Ultimately, we need some board direction. So if the board would like to go with Mosaic's language, we can make it work. So from a legal perspective, both of them are enforceable. Both of them could go forward, but it's really up to the board where they would like to draw this line.
Ms. Baumke.
Okay. From a financial standpoint, I agree with Ms. Shelton that the staff language is better, and then if you wanted to add in the notwithstanding. But if you leave the bond reasonably acceptable to the county, you do not have the flexibility that you might need, because there is, if you have to collect on a bond, there's an intermediary in the middle of that bond, and it's going, it sometimes can be very difficult to access the money. That is where the rub is. In a letter of credit, you can draw on it. Cash equivalent, it's obvious.
Mr. Cavalier.
Could we get Mosaic to respond?
Well, I don't want to get into a back and forth argument.
I think we've had enough questions raised from us that perhaps some clarification would be good.
If he can clarify this, that's fine, but I'm not going to do any debating.
I'll try. To Meg's comment, there will always be a letter of credit or cash to be able to put the site in the order to comply with law. So I think that complies with what Mike was concerned about. The bond is just the extra part for our site plan, which is purely optional, and it's the same standard as any other developer in the county. We're taking it a step further by saying we will leave cash and letter of credit, the easy to pull, to put the site back in compliance with law. That's above and beyond what anyone else has. If you also include that for our site plan, we'll just not have the site plan. It's purely our option. I think it actually helps the county to have this language.
All right. I see what you're saying.
Okay. Is everybody okay with this? How about, is there a number three?
There's several things.
There's four.
Thank you, Jack.
I was more concerned about the stop sign.
I don't think I'm going to live long enough to see anything built here, anyway, but, you know, I mean, I might not live long enough to do this meeting.
Number three is, the original statement did not, the original agreement did not include the occupancy tax or merchant capital tax. Mosaic asked that that be put back in. That was never a direction of the board, so we left it out.
Mr. Chairman, I have a direction. No. I want to go with the staff language.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, number four.
This is regarding transferability of the incentive. The intent of staff's language is to make it very clear that the incentive goes along with the develop, any future owner of the development. I may have to defer to Legal because of this, but that's just clearly what we try to state in our language, and that that would be the intent, that it would go with the property. The language here discusses the change they're proposing. I'll let you, if you'd like to ask them more questions, really talks about the solely being the transfer of the property would defer that from not happening, if that's the right way to say that. In other words, the staff language, I think, makes it quite clear that the development goes, that the incentive goes with the owner of the property.
Any questions or comments on number four?
Mr. Chairman, could Legal tell us what, just adding in the word "solely because" has an impact on that transfer? Because at the end of the day, that's exactly what we want to do, is the incentive should transfer to the new owner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yes, that limits the ability for the board to withhold the consent. By adding that language in, it closes down the options. I remember this section. We had talked about this section. It had gone back and forth several times with their attorneys. And the staff language gives you more options with respect to the good faith ability to deny it. If you go with this, it's going to limit you to that one lane, and that's why that language is included.
Okay. Does everybody understand, have a good understanding of that? So how do we, what's your thoughts on number four?
On what question are we on?
Excuse me, I would like to...
On the solely because?
Solely because.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm afraid I'm not an attorney. I, you know, adding the two words there. I'll ask Mr. Sodi to respond to that one, so I can maybe gain a little other perspective from a non-lawyer.
Just in lay terms, all we wanted was that when you make that decision, because that you just do it in good faith and only look at the merits of what you're being asked at the time, and not be able to say, like you said, the one lane. Just look at that and not make a decision because I insulted your brother-in-law or any other reason. Just make it about that. But it's not a big issue to us. I mean, I didn't, we didn't think it should be too difficult to say you'll act in good faith, but about that, that's all it was. Can I just make a comment on the occupancy tax?
We've already decided.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mauer, do you have a question?
Yeah. It still leaves the acting in good faith, that we're acting in good faith. If we withhold consent when the transfer of the property will result in assignment by the entity which does not own. Even the staff language doesn't indicate that we're going to be, that we can't make a decision because we don't like the brother-in-law or the brother-in-law has been insulted. So I personally would prefer the staff language.
That's fine.
Any other comment? Okay, all in agreement there? Number five.
I mean, I do think it's relevant that we have a comment on the occupancy tax, because we do have to sign it and let you know if we're going to be signing it.
Mr. Chairman, could you respond to the occupancy tax?
If it's that important, go ahead.
All I wanted to mention there, that is, it's in the county's interest. It creates, I'm not saying this just for Mosaic, it's a win-win. It create, to not include and to discriminate against the occupancy tax, creates a disincentive for us to not put a hotel there in favor of a much less lucrative use. And occupancy tax revenue is very favorable revenue to the county, and it's a perverse incentive to not include it. It has unintended consequences, and I just think it's better for the county. It is better for us, because we'd like to have it included, and not have to go through, jump through hoops to do something else when you could use, when you could do a hotel there also. But it's just not in the county's interest, and that was the only, that's really the only argument I'm making.
Mr. Chairman, and I'll respond to that one, because while it is true the hotel occupancy tax is a boon to the county, I mean, we just basically go up to the hotels and say, hand us over 10%, and they do it, and it's easy money. But for the vision of a quiet town center, at least the early original one, that did not include a hotel, because what we wanted to do, and now, you know, part of that site is taken up by apartments, which is, you know, that's fine, it's residential living, but it doesn't help the residents who live in the area who are looking for more commercial opportunities to go and have, you know, can go out to eat, go to shops, those kind of things. And that's what I'm hoping for, first and foremost. I want to make sure we do this MOU. I want it to happen. I want it to happen sooner rather than later. It's been a monkey on my back for years now, and, you know, it's, but I do agree, this, a hotel doesn't benefit the residents in the surrounding area. It doesn't benefit a quiet harbor. It doesn't benefit anybody else. It benefits the county, yes. It puts more money in our tax coffers. But, you know, I'm perfectly fine with the one motel there, and if we don't have another one, it doesn't bother me. I'd much rather have some other type of business there.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make one.
Ms. Shelton.
This is easy. I agree with you, Jack. Looking at the original agreement, when we had this incentive in place, and the intent of that incentive was to stop that leakage and to keep it into a quiet town center area. And so by putting, I mean, we don't want to direct someone what to put into that place, but what, clearly, when we created the incentive package, the incentive package was made to bring in that type of incentive, if you will. And so to enhance our community, not just to bring in tax dollars. And so the other part of it is that we didn't incentivize other people in such a way, so it almost seems unfair to bring that in now and say, okay, oh, we're going to give this to you. I think it's disingenuous to our other small businesses in Stafford County, so I don't think it's an appropriate addition to the contract.
Any other comments? Hearing none? Anything else? Mr. Holden?
Mr. Chairman, just on behalf of staff, I just want you all to know that I'm concerned about item number two on the securities, and that there's been a clear understanding of that issue. I don't want to go forward and not make a comment that I'm concerned that we are putting ourselves at some risk if this project doesn't succeed. It has been three years. It hasn't succeeded so far. Doesn't mean it won't in the future. But I would hate to us come back to you at some point and say, we really didn't cover ourselves. And I will tell you that I don't think that we have articulated that very well to you all at this point in time. And I just want to be sure that you make a well-informed decision. I almost feel as though staff should get together before you take a final vote on this and do a better job of articulating the level of risk that we take if we go with the bond on this project. It's the complications of the development process that are making this more difficult to understand. It's the status of a site plan and what happens with that in terms of the transaction that goes on in their development activity. I feel almost as if, if Mr. Smith could spend some time with Dave and clarify this issue, that it would be beneficial to you before you make a final decision. Last thing I want to do is to not say that. You all go forward, and then we're in a pickle having to spend, you know, significant amount of money. But we haven't articulated it very well, so my suggestion will only be that we put off a final vote and give us that opportunity to clarify that issue.
Are you suggesting put off the vote until July 2nd?
No, sir, till the end of this meeting.
Till the end of this meeting.
We need to get that together tonight and give you some answers on it.
So we would vote tonight. Does anybody have an objection?
I don't have an objective. I just wanted, I didn't say anything after Mr. Cavalier spoke, but I had met with staff earlier, and I think they well articulated the risks that associate with the planning aspect of it, not the legal aspect of it. And I think Mr. Smith explained that very well. The legal position is not going to be the same as the risk that the county does. And so they're two different views. And I feel, after having it reiterated to us, I still feel very strongly that going to a bond and having that option would definitely impose a greater risk to us. And so from my perspective, that wasn't an issue, just in case you were worried about that.
Mr. Chairman, if that's the position of the board, we may not need to do that. But I'm just afraid if you move in that other direction, you won't be informed of...
Well, I personally feel more comfortable if you had waited until after the meeting and we'll vote then. If you're raising a red flag, then we need to adhere to it. Thank you, Mr. Holden. Let's see. Have we left the consent agenda yet, or we...
We're not.
New business, new business. Planning and zoning, discuss proper legislation, proposed resolution R-19-188.
Mr. Chairman, we are scheduled, actually, to go into closed session first, and there's a legal matter that you need to be briefed on related to that, and then there's another...
Let's, let me take number 17 off. I'll defer that to July 2nd, since that was my request.
Mr. Shelton, that's after the rates take effect, though, but I guess you're saying we can't control it anyhow?
We can't control it anyhow. It's just a matter of seeing what we can do in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dudenheffler, would you read this into closed session?
Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for one discussion of, in consideration of the acquisition of real property for the Route 1 and Courthouse Road intersection improvement project, which is a public purpose, where discussion is open, in an open meeting, would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board. Two, consultation with legal counsel regarding proper legislation implementation, which is a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel. And three, discussion concerning the prospective business where no previous announcement has been made of the business interest in... been made of the business interest in locating its facility in the county. And four, discussion in consideration of the disposition of public property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the board. Whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-371A3 and A5 and A9, such discussion may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors that on this, the 18th day of June, that it be hereby does authorize discussion of the above-matted items in closed meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Mauer, end of discussion, cast your votes, tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing, we're in closed session.
Whereas the board has on this, the 18th day of June 2019 adjourned into a closed meeting in accordance with the formal vote of the board and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas the Virginia Freedom of Information Act provides for certification that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the law, now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors does hereby certify on this, the 18th day of June 2019, that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such business or public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were hereby discussed and considered by the board.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Mauer, end of discussion. Hearing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Back to new business agenda, number 16, planning and zoning, discuss proffer legislation, proposed resolution R-19-188. Ms. Baker.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kathy Baker, Department of Planning and Zoning. Have the computer, please. I'm going to go through these rather quickly because of the time. You all don't need to vote on this tonight, planning to bring it back for any recommendations at your next meeting. So the General Assembly, as you recall, enacted new legislation, which is effective July 1st of 2019 regarding the use of proffers to mitigate the impacts of development. The state code provides our authority for rezonings, which may include proffers offered by developer as part of the zoning reclassification or proffer amendment requests. The code generally provides broad authority to negotiate reasonable contribution to offset and mitigate these impacts. So as of July 1st of 2016, that's when new legislation was adopted to specify unreasonable proffers that cannot be accepted or requested by applicants. The legislation limited the acceptance of public facilities proffers to public transportation, public safety, schools and parks. It also limited the consideration of impacts to the time of rezoning and not the time of actual development. And that legislation also limited mitigation to only impacts directly attributable to the development and its proportionate share. Under the new 2019 legislation, an applicant can deem proffers reasonable and appropriate based on a signed proffer statement. The legislation will now allow for the mitigation of additional impacts outside that limited public facility definition. And it also allows developments to fully mitigate impacts by proffering complete facilities as opposed to a portion. The new legislation prohibits verbal discussions from being used as a basis for an unreasonable proffer being required and also requires notice to be provided by an applicant if they feel a proposed condition is unreasonable. So we'll look at rezoning applications and proffer amendments can be reviewed under these different requirements depending upon when filed. So we're looking at prior to July 1st, 2016, on or after July 1st, 2016, and before this new legislation in 2019, and then on or after July 1st, which is coming up soon. So the county can permit pending rezoning applications to be amended if the applicant desires and so they, if they choose to fall under the new legislation, they can decide to resubmit an application and be considered under that new legislation. So right now, we're working on application forms that will be modified to reflect the new code allowances and requirements. We're going to need to establish a policy for processing these applications pursuant to proposed resolution R-1988, which is in your packages. And this would address the declaration of applicable legislative review where someone would actually declare on the application their intent as to which legislation they're going to fall under. Would require signed proffers earlier in the process, so upon application, we would ask them to submit those signed proffers so that, as opposed to later in the process, sometimes we don't get them signed until they actually come to the board meeting. Would also require applicants to pay for any readvertisements based on any changes to the proffers. And then we would also need to set time limits for processing the applications. Future actions would include developing a policy to address evaluating the impact mitigation measures such as identifying public facilities which need to be studied. Staff is going to be notifying current applications of these changes. We have about 13 applications that are in process and so we would reach out to all of them, let them know of these changes, let them know of the new applications that will be out there. So again, no actions requested today, but we would ask for you all to consider the resolution that's in your package and come back on July 2nd to adopt that. The resolution actually sets the parameters for the applications and determining whether you're going to reapply under the new legislation. So with that, be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
We currently have some ordinance changes that are going through our processes for changing time limits. Will this have any impact on those, that ordinance?
The, that's a good question. Jeff is going to help me answer that. I know that we're looking at changing our processes for new applications that would be submitted and is that the intent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Shelton, the ordinance amendment we're discussing would be harmonized with this proposal. It recommends that an application be acted on with 18 months of filing. The applicant could request an extension by the board if they needed additional time. It's an effort to make sure that applications move quickly through the review process and are not hanging dormant.
Thank you.
Okay, one last question, the 13 applicants, they're going to get notification, do you have any idea when that notification will go out?
We're planning to send that once you all adopt the resolution.
Okay, great. Any other questions, Ms. Baker? Thank you very much, appreciate that. That concludes our afternoon session, we will be in recess until 7:00 PM. Everyone to rise, Ms. Mauer will lead us in prayer and I will lead in the pledge.
Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day and the opportunity to gather together, discuss the issues that affect those we represent. Please guide our hearts and minds as we deliberate on what is the best path forward for our great county. Watch over all the incredible young men and women who celebrated their graduation this past weekend and guide them as they transition from their family homes into young adulthood. Please watch over our public safety personnel as they put their lives on the line daily to protect us and bless our brave men and women in the armed forces both here and abroad as they protect and defend our nation. In all these things we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, now do public presentations, anyone want to come up and speak on any subject unless it's on a public hearing this evening? We ask that you wait until that public hearing comes up. But you can talk on any subject you'd like. If you were here this afternoon and spoke on a subject, you can still speak, but not on the subject that you spoke about this afternoon. Did everybody understand that? I don't know if I did. With that said, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address. You will be given three minutes. When the green light comes on, you are go. When the yellow light comes on, you've got about a minute. And when the red light comes on, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Anyone on my right would like to address the board on any subject other than a public hearing. Seeing none, anyone on my left?
Paul Wodowsky, Eight Picket Lane, 140 days till Election Day, that means 141 till the lame duck session comes about. I saw on Fox News today, The Rock, he said he learned this quote when he was 15. I thought it was kind of nice to say it, it's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice. Not that I'm nice. All right, today I received my Stafford County utility bill. Thirty-one years I have not received one. I just got a new tenant who's coming in November 1st and I found out that once I get on the board, I can then use the registered agent and we'll see if we get a county water and sewer bill. Having spent over $100,000 and not getting one, each one of the pictures on the wall who's been here since 1988, it's really 1983 because Resolution 82-341 was the law, and I learned last time I was here that, wow, tow truck drivers, that's the law. They don't have to give notice. Well, I know the law. It's like a radar detector, it's the law. Is it a good law? It depends. Oh, I'm not in academia. But I did warn the citizens, you can always issue a Virginia no trespass notice to any tow truck driver and I dare him to come to my property on 200 Chesterfield Lane in parking spots 062 and we'll see what happens. Now, let's see what else is going on. Ah, mortgages went down, first time in two years. I read that President Trump has only been a politician two-plus years and his 24 rivals have been in politics for 397 years. Reminds me of incumbents, of which I'm going to run against one, a five-time incumbent. That's why we need term limits. I remember last time I was here too, someone was just ranting and raving of a former supervisor and I told Mr. Thomas, you were one and done when Susan Stimson got out of the race. It's just amazing how the voters picked who they want to pick. Also found out about affordable housing and everyone uses the term 40%. Well, think about this, it's two out of every five families who don't have affordable housings in this country. And I pressed Virginia for the name of my organization, it's Paul Wodowsky, to assess to lower taxes. All the S's have dollar signs.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chamber would like to address the board on any issue or subject other than public hearing? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Public hearings, number 18 and 19, and we are going to combine these into one public hearing. Planning and zoning, consider request for a conditional use permit to allow commercial tree stump grinding and mulch sales in the A1 agricultural zoning district and a portion of tax map parcel number 59-72B in the George Washington District. Number 19, planning and zoning, amend and reordain the Stafford County zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map to reclassify from the A1 agricultural zoning to the M2 heavy industrial zoning, a portion of tax map number 59-72B in the George Washington District. And we will vote on that one first, number 19 will be voted on first. Ms. Baker.
Thank you. I have the computer, please. All right, well, you already read what these reclassification and conditional use permit numbers are. As I said, as you said, they are two separate requests. The parcel itself is 181 acre parcel, 5972B. The rezoning request is to reclassify 10.74 acres from A1 to M2 zoning and this would allow for a contractor's equipment yard, machinery service and an office use within that area. The second request for the conditional use permit is on 26 acres and that would be for commercial stump grinding and mulch sales. And Sherman Patrick is the agent representing the owner and applicant here this evening. This is the aerial view of the property, the yellow outline is the 181 acres. You'll see King's Highway at the top of the screen, the blue outline is the rezoning area, the red outline is the conditional use permit area. You'll see a smaller yellow, almost a donut parcel, that's a three-acre piece that is cut out from the property and separated. That's the tract I'll refer to as the Albion Tract, which is, has a historic home on it and it's been owned by the Green Law family for a number of years. There's also a cemetery associated with that parcel. You'll see to the area of the screen, in this vicinity is the existing sand and gravel mining operation and that's accessed by an entrance off of King's Highway, which is located at the median break to a parcel across the road. There's a second access, Albion Lane, which is a private road into the property that serves that Albion parcel. Should have mentioned, as you see to the bottom of the screen is the Rappahannock River. There's also a stream that runs through the property, which is a resource protection area, a perennial stream. This is the zoning of the parcels, the, you'll see the light green is A1 agricultural. The other parcel to the north that you see in the blue is an M2 zoned parcel. That was the former Renaissance Fair property, that's no longer operational there. And the comprehensive plan amendment for the subject property as well as the properties to the east and west are mining and extraction and you'll see the agricultural and rural to the north and also the blue is resource protection associated with the river and the stream. Specifically to the reclassification, this is the parcel zoomed in, you'll see again the entrance with your median break on Route 3. Do have turn lanes into the site going eastbound as well as coming, coming from the east, westbound into the site. There's an existing building, this was previously used as an office for the, related to the sand and gravel mining. It has been vacant for a number of years, but the applicant's proposing to refurbish that building and use it as an office. You'll see the secondary access at Albion Lane. There is an existing small pond and then the larger pond to the left, that is associated with the reclamation of the mining areas and those will eventually be filled in. As the generalized development plan, again, you see that we're keeping the main entrance into the site, there'll be parking to serve that existing, the office building that will be rehabbed and then this is the proposed contractor office and shop and then there would be the equipment storage yard to the rear of that. There, the future area could eventually be a future phase of development, but there's no proposal at this time. That would be timed with the reclamation of the mining area. Do have existing buffers, evergreen trees that are along the frontage of the site and those would remain and they would establish additional buffering around the remainder of the property. There are several proffers associated with this, phasing the development in conjunction, as I said, with the expiration of the mining operation. The hours of operation for this business would be 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM or 9:00 PM during daylight savings time. Would be limited to the two entrances to the property with the main entrance to align with that median break. There's no commercial or industrial access at There's no commercial or industrial access at that secondary entrance, the Albion Lane, which serves that rear property. The alternate access would be provided to that residential use in the cemetery, and that would be a new access, private driveway that would come from the west of the property. And that's so we're not mixing the residential and industrial or commercial traffic. The mix of existing and proposed evergreen trees along King's Highway and the site buffers, and they would retain the existing evergreen buffers where I showed you, and also screening the outdoor storage from King's Highway. The building would incorporate specific materials and colors, and, as well as your signage, would be compatible with our neighborhood design standards in the highway corridor overlay district. The building would also comply with the fire protection requirements, and an automatic defibrillator would be provided in each of those buildings. The lighting would be directed away from the adjacent properties and King's Highway, and an oil separator would be utilized in the shop building. Are there any questions on the rezoning before I move to the conditional use permit?
Any questions, Ms. Baker? No, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I should have showed you. This was just the design standard for the building, the architectural materials. There'll be some added decorative features, such as awnings on the building itself over the windows in the existing building. Sorry, I wasn't far enough along to ask questions. But just to note, for the transportation, there was no required impact analysis just due to the low volume of traffic. It's proposed at 102 vehicles total for the day, with 9.6 a.m. peak hour trips and 10.2 p.m. peak hour trips. And again, the primary site entrance located at the median break with the existing turn lanes would be sufficient for this. There is proposed connection to public water to serve the office use. The water line is located on the north side of King's Highway, and there would be a private drain field utilized for the offices. And we do find that this is consistent with the land use recommendations in the comp plan. It's also consistent with that adjacent mining operation that's on the portion of the property. The architectural design is consistent with our standards plan and the Hcod, and the proffers would help mitigate those impacts. So we are recommending approval with the proffers that they've submitted that are in your package. I did not note on here, but the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval on May the 15th. So with regard to the conditional use permit, you see the area outlined in red again. Just to acclimate again, this is the Albion House. And you'll see these existing buildings that are agricultural and storage buildings, and then the existing drive, which is Albion Lane. The generalized development plan shows the areas for, as far as the stump grinding, the materials would be delivered by trucks and to the site, and the area would use mobile stump grinders to do the work. There would only be one onsite at any time. But the stump grinders can actually move around to where your piles of material are. So that would be within that area. And then in this vicinity, you would, you have your finished product, which is the mulch piles that would have for contractors and such to come and purchase that product. So just to point out again, here is the house, and this is the existing cemetery, which will be fenced, and will have a buffer, and it's outside the actual limits of the property and the condition, or of the conditional use permit area. There would also be some storage areas in this vicinity for other associated vehicles and such. With regard to the stump grinders, you'll see the photo of one in the upper right-hand corner, and you'll see just the noise generation levels from that schematic that was presented by the applicant. And you'll see, within 100 feet, your decibel range is from 60 to 67 decibels. The conditions specify that the machines would not be within 200 feet of any residence. So they should be well within the limits of the current noise decibel level requirements under code. And with regard to the conditions, they would be limiting the areas as shown on the GDP with fencing surrounding the uses. Limit the operation of one grinding machine in operation at one time. The hours of operation would be 8:00 a.m. to 4:30, Monday through Friday. The mulch sales would also be permitted on Saturday. They would maintain the permitted noise levels as specified, and the grinding machines, as I said, no closer than 200 feet from any dwelling. The trucks would be limited to that primary entrance on Route 3. Residential and cemetery access will be relocated. The fencing will be provided around the cemetery. There would also be buffering adjacent to the Albion House property. That was a request during the Planning Commission review, that there be specific evergreen screening along the north side of that property.
Kathy Mauer has a question.
Yeah. So I know that we, first of local time, so we've got, there's a timing in the rezoning, and the proffer was 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.? Or 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.? And now I see 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Why is there a difference?
This is just for the mulch, the mulch operation.
Okay, just for the mulch sales?
No, it's for the actual grind, stump grinding.
Okay.
And that full operation there. The front portion of the property, the 10-acre rezoning piece where they're having the office use and the contractors.
They can stay longer.
Storage, that, they have different operating hours.
Okay, fine. I just.
So similar impacts, the no traffic impact analysis was required. They're proposed 124 vehicles per day. You see the a.m. and peak, p.m. hours. The, again, the same site entrance, they would not be able to use the Albion Lane entrance for the commercial traffic. And there would be no utilities required with this particular operation. So we are finding this also consistent with the land use recommendations in the comp plan, and consistent with that existing mining operation, and proposed conditions should help mitigate any potential impacts. And staff is recommending approval. The Planning Commission also recommended unanimous approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Baker? Thank you, Kathy. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Sherman Patrick with Compton and Dooling. We're here this evening representing Cisson Excavating. They've been operating in Stafford County, in Spotsylvania County, for 40 years, and they're looking to relocate to this new facility on King's Highway. The staff has given a very thorough presentation. I missed the opportunity to plan a commission to be brief. I spoke a little bit longer than I think I was welcome. I don't want to miss that opportunity again, because I see you have several things on your agenda this evening, but I also don't want to miss the opportunity to answer any questions that you may have. We do have, the only thing that I did not see in Kathy's presentation was the alignment of the alternative means of access to the residential use, and I have a slide that shows that, if you're interested. It generally takes it to the east of the existing facility and brings it in in that direction. But other than that, I think she covered on almost everything else that I would otherwise bring up. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We'll open up the public hearing. Once again, please restrict your remarks to this subject. You have three minutes. Once you state your name, the green light will come on. The yellow light means you have a minute, and the red light means, please wrap up your comments. Anyone on my right want to address the board on this subject? Seeing none, anyone on my left?
Paul Wodowski, Eight Picket Lane. Since you combined names, I only get three minutes. Now, I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and it was approved. I'm glad it was approved. As you all know, I believe that CUPs are favoritism. I've even come up with a couple of acronyms for CUPs, not just conditional use permits. It could be the country's under pressure, hmm, like we are now. It could be the Commonwealth is under pressure. Or in this case, it's the county's under pressure to take this from A1 to M2. Now, this is good from an assessment standpoint, because now we can assess this property as M2. And as you heard, they've been in business 40 years. And I talked to the applicant afterward, and it's really sad that they had to go outside the county with their product when they could stay within the county. So this is one of the times where in the Commonwealth, where common sense is not common, that a conditional use permit should be allowed. As you, as you heard earlier about the Renaissance Fair, which was in the Dark Ages, we are in the 21st century. The gravel, I don't know how that wound up on A1. I'd be curious to see what the assessment of that property was in that regards before they've acquired this property. The other good thing that came out of the public presentation by the Planning Commission was, this company is a good neighbor. They really showed how they adjusted the lighting and the other aspects. And I fully expect that even though we have no negative aspects, there's always a negative aspect to habitats, because the 2030 cicada is coming.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the board chambers like to address the board on this subject? Hearing none, I bring it back to the board, close the public hearing. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, thank you, sir. This, the applicant came to me over a year ago with this, and I was very pleased with the concept. I was very pleased that they were working to preserve a lot of open space. There's, on that site, and I think several members of the board have gone there, there's a rather large, impressive osprey nest that they made a point of making sure that they were not going to disturb. So I was very impressed with their attitude throughout. So I will move for approval of 019-33.
I have a motion and a second. Do, hearing a discussion? I'd just like to comment that Cisson has had this operation in my district for a number of years. It's in a high-traffic area. I get absolutely no complaints, absolutely none. With that said, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I move for approval, R19-154.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Who was first there?
Meg.
Meg, Ms. Bompke seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries 7-0. Let me make sure we clarify that the reason 18 and 19 were flipped was because of me. I made that request, I'll explain to you later. I just didn't want staff to get blamed for that, because I did it. Item number 20, planning and zoning, amend and reordain Stafford County Code Section 28-59, Highway Corridor Overlay District, to eliminate screening requirements for service bays, proposed ordinance 019-24. Mr. Foley? Who's in, oh, Kathy. Come on up, Kathy.
This item is an amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the screening of service bay doors in the Highway Corridor Overlay. As you know, portions of Garrisonville Road, Jeff Davis Highway, Warnton Road, and all of King's Highway are designated as a highway corridor, or as we call it, Hcod. The purpose of the Hcod is to provide an overlay zone along these high-traffic roads where standards could address access and design needs. So one of the main focuses is to prevent, basically, we call it clutter, that would distract from people driving down these highways, which may result in traffic safety issues along the streets. So the Hcod was first adopted in 1995 to help address these issues. Right now, the Hcod requires that service bays, loading spaces, and service entrances be screened from view, completely from the corridor highway. In some instances, the requirement for screening the service bays provides issues for the property owners, basically because of the large size of the bay doors, how high they need to go, as well as the necessary location to get vehicles through those doors. The screening may also reduce visibility of a business, and so we've had numerous requests for relief of this requirement. So the proposed ordinance would keep the requirement of screening for the loading spaces and service doors, but it would require that the service bay doors actually be oriented away from the highway, instead of actually eliminating the, or instead of having that full screening require, requirement, excuse me. So the CD, CEDC and the board both recommended approval of this item to forward to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did tweak the ordinance a little bit, but the form that you see it in tonight was approved by the Commission 7 to nothing on May 15th. And I'll be happy to address any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Kathy. This time I'll open the public hearing. Anyone on my right? I don't think so, because they're all county employees. Anyone on my left wishing to address the board on this subject?
Paul Wodowski, Eight Picket Lane. All right. The commercial corridor, 1995. I'd been in the county for five years, and I think we just finally made the exit 143B instead of 7B. And that was the beginning of the commercial corridor. And we had Gary's Car Wash was one of the businesses, I recall. And I can't remember if Jiffy Lube was the other one. But recently, you passed another car wash. And this is a good thing to do, especially for businesses, because it does detract from them getting customers, because sometimes I've seen on Jiffy Lube, they have to sit out there and wave signs. Gary's Car Wash has to do the same concept. So if I was on the Planning Commission, it'd be 8-0.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chambers like to address the board on this subject? Hearing none, I bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make, I'll make a motion to propose ordinance 019-24.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Before we move into further, I need to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing with one absent. Public Works, item 21, consider amending and reordaining County Code Section 15.4.1C entitled Maximum Speed Limits in Certain Resident Districts Penalty to Add Autumn Drive, SR-1272, within the Country Wood Estates subdivision, Rock Hill District. Mr., yes, Alex, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alex Ozjak, Transportation Program Manager at Public Works, here to give you a brief presentation tonight on the, considering to establish a residence district in the autumn, sorry, in the Autumn Drive in the Country Woods Estates subdivision. Let's see, Public Works received a request from the residents in the Country Wood Estates subdivision, concerned with vehicles that are speeding in their neighborhood and exceeding the 25 mile an hour posted speed limit. They addressed a desire to address the speeding traffic. One method for doing this traffic calming is to establish a residence district with higher fines for speeding. Autumn Drive is a residential road with approximately nine, sorry, 0.9 miles in length, with approximately 40 homes fronting the road, as well as a private day, private day school for young children. Staff conducted a traffic study over a period of 10 days back in February 2019, and the study showed that Autumn Drive met all required criteria to establish a residence district. Residents of Country Wood Estates decided to pursue this traffic calming measure and collected the necessary signatures, with approximately 53% of respondents voting in the affirmative. And after approved tonight, the ordinance 019-35 will amend the county code to create a residence district along Autumn Drive and allow for the placement of the additional 200 fine signs underneath the posted speed limit signs. And hopefully, these signs will And hopefully, these signs will encourage motorists to drive and obey the speed limit or far, excuse me, or face harsher fines. And now this fine also can only be suspended if the court orders a community service instead. Here's some of the criteria listed here in order to meet for the residence district. They met all the criteria. Here's just a location map showing Autumn Drive within Country Wood Estates. That's pretty much it. Any questions from the group?
Have any questions? Hearing none, thank you, Alex. Open up the public hearing. Anyone in the chamber like to address this subject?
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. This is the result of the $7.6 million road project on Mountain View. And this is not the only area that's facing these aspects. If you go further down and get closer to Mountain View High School, you have those 25 houses off Picket Lane which have the signs incorrectly. And as you know, we had that recent fatality, and I am all for anything that's worth public safety. Matter of fact, I would even go to the sheriff and tell him to put one of his empty police cars there because maybe that might be a deterrent. Just like they also put up the speed signs on 630, I think these are very important for the safety of these children. And if it wasn't for the high schoolers who were working in the neighborhood with me, I would not know the danger that they face every day going from my subdivision there. So I looked at property on Barnswell Lane, and unfortunately, it didn't stay open. Otherwise, that's where I would have been, and you wouldn't have had Eight Picket Lane.
Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board on this issue? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. Ms. Mauer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for approval of proposed ordinance 19-30, oh, 19-35.
I have a motion and second by, second by Mr. Dudenheffer. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the residents of this neighborhood. It is always heartwarming when somebody takes matters into their own hands. I'm very pleased to be able to support this, and I want to thank you for all the hard work.
Any other comments? I will have to say, I did run up on one of those empty sheriff's cars today that's usually empty, but guess what? It wasn't empty. No further discussion, cast your vote, tally the vote. Motion carries six to nothing with one absent. Item number 22, Public Works Transportation, consider amending and reordaining Stafford County Code Section 15-56, designation of restricted parking areas within the Greens at Amy Clay subdivision, Rock Hill District. Alex.
Yes, so again, for another one here. Public Works, we received a letter back in April 2009 from the Greens at Amy Clay Homeowners Association requesting that the state-maintained streets in their neighborhood be designated as restricted parking areas. The HOA also provided an approved policy resolution, also requesting the restricted parking areas. All of these identified streets within their community meet the definition of a public highway as defined in Stafford County's Code, Section 15-55, and the HOA letter and policy resolution meets the required minimum criteria to warrant restricted parking areas. The board authorized the public hearing back at the May 21 meeting, and advertisements for tonight's public hearing ran in the Freelance Star on June 4th as well on the 11th. And after approved tonight by the board, ordinance 019-36 will amend the county code to designate all of the streets meeting the definition of a public highway within the Greens Amy Clay subdivision as restricted parking areas. Here's just a map showing the subdivision and all the streets there outlined in red. And that's it. Any questions?
Have any questions, Ms. Mauer?
Yes, so just for public purposes, what does restricted parking area mean? I've got two different parking issues in this particular neighborhood. This will take care of one, the other one we can't do within state code, but I would like you to explain.
Sure, I believe, I have to admit, I'm fairly new to this program, but I believe the restricted parking mainly for large commercial vehicles and things of that nature that aren't allowed to park on the streets overnight.
No campers, no trailers, no boats.
Right, no tractor trails, all that.
Will not be allowed in the public right-of-way.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Alex. Then I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone in the chamber like to address this for the board? Oh, I'm sorry, I do have two speaker cards.
Yes, sir.
Mike Gazawi?
Yes, sir.
Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes, you did a great job. Thank you.
Well, you laid it out there for me.
Gazawi, I spelled it out for you.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Mike Gazawi. I reside at 71 Kinross Drive. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I am the HOA president who has been elected for a little over a year and a half now for this community. Before my, my presence on, on the board, this community was in a chaotic environment to where we, the only time I was here, the last time, was when we had a developer who was trying to penetrate our neighborhood into new development. And when, that's when everybody woke up and they wanted to have an active HOA present to represent them. So at which point we, prior to that, we only had one representative who represented the HOA, there was no involvement with the community. But you know, sometimes when things negative happen to you, you wake up and you take action. So we, we stood a five-member board at this time. The reason I'm telling you all this because this is my first time presenting to you, as well as I want you to know what kind of involvement we have today in Amy Clay that we didn't have in the past. So we stood up five board member, and by default, I became the president because nobody wanted to take the job. So I am the president of that, of that board. We established committees. One of the first thing, first things we did, we did Architectural Control Review Committee. We have Communication Committee. We have Capital Improvement Planning Committee as well, Communication, and also we have a Social and Event Committee. And as a matter of fact, we're having a Fourth of July block party coming up here. Please join us when you, if you, if you have time. So we turned around this neighborhood to where we have a presence and we have some, some structure to it. We also have partnered with the, partnered with the state and the county sheriff's office as well as, as Mr. Moore's office here to get things back on track within the community from signs being back on the, on the streets as well as illegal parking being addressed by the sheriff's office. I would like to, so on April 9th, as the gentleman here on my right mentioned, that a quarterly meeting was held where the residents of Amy Clay voted in, in favor of adopting the restricted parking area program. And thank you for the clarification, Honorable Moore, for, this is mainly for commercial vehicles and not for the other issue that we have at the, on the streets that we cannot So we did that, which led us to today, we are here today to kind of reinforce the, the need for our parking as well, and I wanted to hear, I want you to hear that as well. The Amy Clay Board of Directors is in force, is in support with its residents finding, find the passing of this resolution to be of its best interest as it promotes safety and better value for our community. And as an example, which I really don't have much time to say, an old neighbor came to my son's graduation this last weekend, and she said, "The neighborhood is looking a lot better. It looks safer in here. People are taking care of business." And that's mainly what I wanted to kind of let you know, that we're, we're back in business here and, and the, and the community, and, and passing of this resolution will promote that as well. My aim for Amy Clay is to continue collaboration.
Sir, I'll have to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Sure. My, my, my aim for Amy Clay is to continue partnership, partnering with the community, with the county, the sheriff's office, and the state on matters of this, of this nature as well as continuing collaboration. At the end of the day, we, we can all make a difference if we work together.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Moore, for, for your support with this, with this passing of this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Second speaker card I have is Kristen Barnes.
Hello, everybody. Kristen Barnes, 11 Temple Drive, and I also live in the Greens of Amy Clay. I am the chair for the Architecture Review Committee, and I got that job because he talked me into it. I am here today because we were asking you to amend the county code to include Amy in the restricted parking program. One of the reasons why I really like living in Amy Clay is because we have big houses, big lots, and narrow streets. And that's nice because it creates a sense of community. It's a very homey type of, of neighborhood. One of the things that I like least about living in Amy Clay is it has really narrow streets. It's kind of a pro, it's kind of a con. There isn't a week that goes by that I don't have a picture of somebody behind a stuck school bus because somebody has parked a little too far, and there's a trailer out here, or there's some kind of a commercial vehicle parked here, whatever. And I mean, those bus drivers, they don't hesitate to lay on that horn a little bit. But it happens, I would say, at least on a weekly basis, and so that tells us that we indeed, indeed need to have this restriction in our neighborhood. We've had trailers, boats, campers, all kinds of things, and we need some teeth. And by ourselves, we don't have a lot of teeth. And so if we can get this ordinance amended so that Amy Clay is part of that restricted program, it'll give us a little bit of muscle behind being able to, to, to clean that up a little bit. And, and like what Mrs. Mauer said, that's one of the, the two parking problems that we've had, and hopefully, this one will take care of that one. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber like to address this subject?
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. HOAs are houses of aristocrats. You heard it, the big houses with narrow streets. DMV has a test. In order for you to get a driver's license in the Commonwealth of Virginia, you have to know about narrow streets like in Vista Woods in the Rock Hill District where you have to have your vehicle completely off the road for public safety. Now, I have no qualms about the recreational vehicles, the boats and the motorhomes and the campy trailers, but I have heartburn with commercial vehicles because, as I said in my first comments tonight, affordable housing is not there for many people, and many people who have commercial vehicles, that's their primary vehicle to go to work in, and that's how they make their living. And also, commercial vehicles are very important for plumbers, for your big houses, and maybe you need a tankless hot water heater, so maybe you need some gas services, but I don't think you should have any commercial vehicles under this ordinance like you, like you want here. So, and as you know, we live in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, so we have commercial vehicles like Server Pro and Service Master. So I know you're trying to do the right thing with the recreational vehicles, which is a, a good aspect, but your property is only worth, when you put it on the market, when you get someone to, who's approved and get a signed contract, and decides to become a member of your HOA, that's what your property is worth. It's just a big fourth tax, and you have the narrow streets, and I'm, I think the board should help you with the recreational vehicles, but the commercial vehicles needs to be addressed for the reasons I've cited.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Ms. Mauer.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion in favor of proposed ordinance 019-36.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dudenheffer. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to, I want to thank the members of the Amy Clay HOA. I really appreciate you guys getting involved over the last several years, and also for being supportive and, and helping me deal with your other parking issue. And I want to make it clear to the members of this board that I think all of you have heard from another neighbor within the neighborhood regarding a different parking issue, and this will not address that. However, I want to thank Mr. Foley for also responding on that particular issue that state code won't allow us to address that. So I am publicly telling you that because you weren't a party to the email, and hopefully that put that issue to rest. But thank you for all of your support. Thank you for all of your help and your hard work in getting this, this far.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to nothing with one absent. Item 23, Public Works Transportation, consider the condemnation and exercise of quick-tape powers in connection with the Route 1 and Courthouse Road intersection improvement project. Alex, you, you're getting double-dued tonight, aren't you?
Yeah, I think I pulled the short straw.
Mr. Cavalier recused himself earlier in the meeting, so he will not be attending or voting on this issue.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, first, I just wanted to give the board a, a little background on this project. This Route 1 Courthouse Road project will widen Route 1 between the Bells Hill-Hope Road intersection and the Courthouse Road intersection to provide dedicated left-turn lanes on Route 1 to turn onto those side streets. Now, these new turn lanes will reduce congestion and delay experienced at these two intersections and improve roadway safety. The county has contracted with Bowman Consulting for project design as well as the right-of-way acquisition services. The county will need to acquire the necessary property rights before utility relocation and construction can begin. We're currently looking at starting utility relocation this fall, and road construction anticipated to start in spring 2021. I've got a total of 29 different parcels are being impacted by this project, and all offer letters have now been presented to the landowners. To date, the county has reached agreement with 14 property owners, and three other properties were previously approved for condemnation, including the seventh. Tonight, we have 12 parcels that still remain to be required, acquired, and our consultant and our staff has been working with these property owners to address their concerns and come to an agreement. Here's a slide just showing kind of a history of contact with the affected landowners out on the project, starting back in December 2014, when first notification letters were sent out about collecting survey information, up to our public hearing that was held on June 2016, all the way to the present today. Getting down into the individual parcels, here we are looking at the graphic showing the acquisition areas on Tax Map Parcel 30-31A, which is owned by the People's Bank of Danville. You'll probably notice we've got quite a large temporary construction easement area outlined there in the orange. And our reason for that is, as part of our roadway widening, we're impacting some parking spaces in the front as well as some of their drive-through aisle for their teller. As part of our construction project, we also, we'll be constructing replacement parking at the rear of the building and doing some minor realignment of the curb and gutter to reestablish that drive-through aisle for the bank. Bonafide offer was presented to the landowner back in October 2013. We were informed about attorney representation back in January, but since then, there has been no response from either the landowner or their attorney regarding our purchase offer or any type of counteroffer. The lack of communication from the landowner has obviously stalled negotiations on this Moving on to the next one here, this is the graphic showing acquisition areas for Tax Map Parcel 30A-1-1 owned by J.D. Moore and Joe D. Knightmore. A bonafide offer was presented back in September 2014. County staff and Bowman has met with the landowner to discuss their concerns about some parking and signage they had, and we believe we've addressed those concerns where no parking will actually be, be impacted, and we can relocate the sign on their property behind the right-of-way line. Now, although we're recommending condemnation on this project nor to keep on schedule, we do believe we'll be able to reach an amicable settlement with this landowner. The next parcel here is Tax Map 30A-1-8 owned by Vercob LLC. Again, the road widening here is going to be impacting some of their parking along the front of Route 1. And the landowner obviously has concerns about the loss of parking as well as possible impacts to their underground fuel tanks there with the Valero gas station. We do have indicated there in the purple is, would be a Dominion easement, and they were concerned with underlying electric interfering with fuel tanks. However, that is going to be an overhead easement only, so it would not infuel the fuel tanks or the canopy as well. We did talk with Dominion and had them modify their agreement to show that would be overhead only to help allay the landowner's concerns. However, even after doing this and despite multiple attempts to try and reach the landowner and reach a settlement, we haven't heard any response from them back since mid-April. So again, the lack of communication with the landowner has kind of stalled negotiations on this parcel. Next is acquisition areas on Tax Map Parcel 30-64 and 30U-1-104. Like most of these parcels here along Route 1, we're impacting some of their parking here along the front, as you can see here in the impacting some of their parking here along the front, as you can see here in the green, for a right-of-way acquisition. In addition to the parking, there's also an underground stormwater detention system underneath the parking lot that we will also be impacting with our construction. Obviously, the landowner had some concerns about this. Talking through them, our contractor will actually be replacing the underground storm detention system that's impacted as part of our project, so they won't have to worry about that at all. Sorry. So again, you know, we had our bonafide offer was presented back in October 2018. We've worked with the landowner and their attorney to kind of address their concerns with the underground detention system. We did recently receive a separate appraisal from the attorney about 30 days ago, and our consultant has just about completed the review. And so we're getting ready to recommend a counter offer for them. And so now, while we're still recommending moving forward with the condemnation, obviously, we're still going to work to try and reach an agreement after the fact. Next on the list here is Tax Map Parcel 30-32, which is owned by SEJ Asset Management and Investment Company. This is the 7-Eleven parcel right up here on the corner. As you can see here, again, with our widening of Route One, we're impacting their fueling station there in the front, their fuel pumps, as well as the canopy. You know, our consultant and our appraiser analyzed this site with the impacts to the fueling station. We're also showed that there would be major difficulties in getting delivery vehicles to both enter and exit the property to make deliveries without either moving over on someone else's property or pretty much blocking all over Route One to move or maneuver in and out. Our appraiser recommended that we move forward as this is a total acquisition. So in addition to the right-of-way required for the parcel, we'll also be acquiring the residual of the parcel in its entirety. We made a bonafide offer to the landowner back in February 2019. We've had multiple attempts to try and reach the landowner and their attorney to discuss the offer, solicit a counter, and again, the lack of communication from the landowner and their attorney is stalling negotiations on this parcel. Next on the list is Tax Map Parcel 30-59 and 30-59B, which are adjacent parcels and both owned by Thurston Properties LLC. This is the large church up on the hill here off of Route One. Again, due to our acquisition, will be impacting quite a bit of their parking that's along the frontage there. We have developed a plan in order to replace that parking. We'll actually be using some of the land from the adjacent parcel, which is owned by Mr. Hyman, which we're doing a total acquisition on that as well. We've reached an agreement with him. So our plan is to convey a portion of that leftover residual property back over to Thurston Properties LLC to provide an area for their replacement parking. And we have worked out a plan to, they currently have two entrances on Route One, which provides them circulation on their property. We'll only be able to provide one entrance on Route One now because the second entrance, not only would it be too close to the intersection to violate VDOT access management standards, but it would also require additional property from other owners in order to construct that entrance. So with their one single entrance, we've been able to reroute their parking so at least they can have two-way circulation within their internal site. Again, we provided the bonafide offer to the landowner back in December 6, 2018. We've met with the landowner on a few occasions, as well as his engineer, to talk about their concerns and try to address them and develop those plans. Like I said, our engineer developed the site modifications to provide replacement parking and the internal circulation. And again, we're recommending condemnation to keep this one on schedule while we continue to work with the landowner to address their concerns and reach a settlement. Last on the list for tonight is Tax Map Parcel 30-57, which is owned by Metacorp Properties. This is just a snapshot of the property. It's quite a large parcel, about 12 and 1/2 acres. It was just too big. It kind of fit on the screen and make any kind of sense out of the drawing here. So what you can see is, again, we're taking some roadway frontage off Route One, as well as easements for sanitary sewer and utilities. The owner did have some concerns about possibly putting an entrance here in the future and thought that this would perhaps prohibit them from installing an entrance. And after some discussions with them, we were able to allay those concerns and let them understand that, you know, this acquisition would not prohibit them from installing an entrance in the future. They would just necessarily need the land use permit by VDOT in order to install that entrance. So again, we provided the bonafide offer in January 1, 2019. We feel like we've addressed their concerns regarding their future access on Route One. The Metacorp Board of Directors will need to approve this purchase agreement. In speaking with their representative this week, it looks like they're making moves to go ahead and approve that. However, we'd still like to approve the condemnation so we can continue to move forward with the project and work out the agreement after the fact. So it's a brief summary over tonight. Again, all these condemnations are necessary in order to acquire the easements and a right-of-way. That's necessary to begin utility relocation this fall, as well as construction next spring. Staff recommends the approval of all seven condemnations before the board. If that happens, certified letters will be sent to the property owners informing them of the upcoming condemnation action at least 30 days before we file with the court. And approximately four, within four days after filing the certificate, we'll send them a copy of certificate as well. And then obviously, we'll continue to conduct negotiations with these owners and try to reach a settlement in the future. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Any questions for Alex? No, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
It's time I open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this subject, please step forward.
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. Let's start by saying God ain't making any more land. And I feel so good that you're going to do seven condemnations. I know the county will take care of everything, just like my water bill for 31 years. I'm sure you're going to address all concerns of everyone with your bonafide offers. I wish I would have known about Bowman Consulting. I would have done some look-up of how they got hired, who they are, have they ever been involved with a divergent diamond, all these aspects. Were they connected with VDOT? Like I said, I only have three minutes. It's already cut and dry. Just look at all the paperwork here. All you got to do is say, "I approve." I see Mr. Lemming was involved in some of this stuff. And now that he's on his ways to retirement, I guess you'll get that one without a fight. But I'm just going to step away from this. I'm going to watch and keep on reminding all the citizens in this county, if you're an owner, make sure you take care of the land that you have. God ain't making any more land, and don't let the bureaucrats just come and take it away.
Anyone else in the chamber like to address this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. I understand from county attorney that each one of these resolutions has to be voted on separately. Could you see if Ms. Mauer's coming back into the chamber? I don't...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay, Acquire District, Ms. Shelton.
Okay, let's get started. I'd like to make a motion to propose Resolution R-19-145.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Dudenheffer. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries five to nothing with one absent and one abstention.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve R-19-146.
Motion seconded by Mr. Dudenheffer. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries five to nothing with one absent, one abstention. Ms. Shelton.
I'd like to make a motion to approve R-19-147.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries five to nothing with one absent, one abstention.
I'd like to make a motion to approve R-19-148.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes five to nothing with one absent, one abstention.
I'd like to make a motion to approve R-19-149.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. There you go. Five to nothing with one absent, one abstention.
I'd like to make a motion to approve R-19-150.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries five to nothing, one absent, one abstention.
I'd like to make a motion to approve R-19-151.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes five to nothing with one absent and one abstention. That ends our evening public hearings, but we will go back to item number 15 from this afternoon. Economic development, consider rescinding or amending a memorandum of understanding with Acquire Realty LLC. And would somebody get Mr. Cavalier?
Here it comes.
Proposed, associated with the Acquire Town Center, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. After the discussion this afternoon, I worked with Dave Hanodl to come up with some language that we could come to some kind of compromise. I spoke with Mr. Sodi, and he agreed with that compromise. And so I'll go over the amendments that we heard from the board and make sure that we're all on the same page. Can I have the computer, please? Okay, so we start with the demolition and/or screening. The board decided to allow the screening in lieu of the demolition with the securities. We spoke with Mr. Sodi, and he will have his civil engineer work with our environmental team to do an evaluation of the existing structures and come up with a cost, and then we'll use that cost to have the letter of credit so that if we need to replace any of that stormwater, we'll have that amount covered. And that will be within 30 days, and I'll show you that language in just a second.
Mr. Chairman, back to number one, did we change the days on that, or I recommended 90 days versus 120? Was that good, too?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
I thought, actually, we had a misunderstanding because items 2A and B in the proposed language was 30 days, but 2C was for the demolition. And so we're asking for 2C to be within 90 days?
We're asking that they will provide screening or a building permit within 90 days.
Okay, all right. So just there's what, within 90 days, okay?
If you would like to reduce it, we can do that.
Awesome, thank you.
The taxes, we're sticking with the county language as directed by the board, no changes to taxes, and the same with the transferability, there'll be no change. Okay, so for the securities language, we're moving forward with the language suggested by Mosaic, however, with the addition that they will provide the equivalent costs that will be determined by county staff in coordination with Mosaic's civil engineer within 30 days of execution of Board Resolution R-19-186 as amended. So that'll give us 30 days to approve the amount that they will have on the letter of credit. And it'll be up to the county to determine that amount, working with their civil engineer.
Ms. Shelton and Ms. Bonk.
I thought we understood that one of our challenges was the specific language on bonds and that we were going to eliminate the bond language.
Right. The reason we were eliminating the bond language is because we're not sure of what that stormwater system can handle. And so we'll work with their civil engineers. They say they've replaced a lot of it. We'll work with their civil engineers. We'll get our environmental technicians out there. We'll TV the lines if we need to, but we'll ensure that we know what is new in their system, what is in good shape in their system, and then we'll get estimates for anything that would need to be improved.
Mr. Chairman.
So you're saying that with the addition of this language, it's going to mitigate our biggest concern for bonds?
Right. They'll be able to use bonds like they currently do
Okay.
for their site plan.
Okay.
But for anything that we feel is a damaged stormwater amenity, right now, we will require a letter of credit, as they have in red here.
Ms. Bonk.
So I just want to make sure that the language at the very end in the blue, "to be determined by county staff in coordination with Mosaic's civil engineer," I guess the question I have is that a little too loosey-goosey? What happens if there's civil, where do we really have the final say there on what the amount has to be? To be determined by county staff? Is that strong enough language? It is? Okay. All right. I'm assuming our county attorney wrote it, correct? Okay. Seems a little loose, but you're the lawyer, not me.
It gives the power to county staff, and it gives the Mosaic engineer the ability to give us information to make us feel comfortable.
Just confirming.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, just to, I think, Ms. Shelton's point, the bonds will cover the ENS measures?
No, the bonds will cover stormwater, but any stormwater that is currently damaged, we'll get a letter of credit. By code or in our policy, they have to do letter of credit in cash for the ENS as it is. But state code allows bonds for stormwater, but if we find any damaged stormwater, then we'll want a letter of credit for that to protect the county.
I have another question, though.
Michelle.
You're, I'm sorry, thank you, sir. I forgot to address you. It says the currently approved site plan. We know that Mosaic asked earlier to remove the current site plan, and they said tonight that the current site plan is not valid. If they remove the site plan, what does that do to this clause?
Which section are you looking at?
Securities, the first sentence, and it says cost estimates for the currently approved site plan.
Right. So we still want a bond for the current site plan, and we want them to give us updated estimates for that. If they try to pull the plan, and that is up to us. We have a performance agreement with them, and so we can maintain that bond and those cash securities until they either meet the performance agreement, which is build a new thing, or we come to another agreement where they can amend it and do something less. And that's why we want the cash securities for if there's anything damaged. We can make sure that the damaged stuff is fixed, but we're not going to make them build a, we can't really make them build something that they had on their site plan if they no longer want to build it. We can just make sure that whatever they leave in place will meet what we need for our stormwater regulations, and that we have the money to compel them to do that.
So, Ms. McLendon, I'm sorry to be stickler on this because it, when I read it, it really sounds like this entire paragraph is about the currently approved site plan. If you tell me I'm overreacting to that and this, and I'm sorry, I'm not disparaging Mr. Smith at all.
That's okay.
But it's like, I just want to be sure that if they remove the site plan tomorrow morning, that we still have a very strong agreement, and even if we don't have a bond in place or anything, are we still covered? If they sign it today, they've got that 30 days, and they remove the site plan, are we still covered?
The securities are based on our performance agreement, which is based on the site plan. If they get rid of the site plans, we would still have the performance agreement, and we would say you didn't build the site plan the way you were. And so we could pull this cash or letter of credit to repair anything that we need to, to stabilize the site and get it into working order.
Just feels uncomfortable to me, but I will defer to staff.
Yeah. Ms. Shelton, one of the biggest issues with the Acquire Town Center and why this kind of really bubbled to head was because they tried to pull their bond. They have a current bond, and they can't pull that current bond without approval by staff. So even if they pull their site, they still can't pull their bond.
I didn't catch that.
And do you need me to repeat it?
I had forgotten about the current bond.
Yes. So I figured that you had forgotten about that one little tidbit that we have a bond with them right now.
Any other questions?
So the options for the board is you can amend the language as suggested and move forward to the Resolution R-19-86, which authorizes the county minister to execute the MOU after staff has approved an appropriate amount for the LLC or cash to protect the county. the county, or the board can rescind the agreement. So if you execute, if you give him the ability to execute, he won't actually do that until we, we come to this within 30 days. But you don't have to, the board doesn't have to wait for action. You could take action tonight.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, your district.
I'd like to make a motion, sir. I'd like to make a motion for R19-186 to authorize the MOU with the adjusted amendments that we discussed, primarily removing, and I'm just restating it for my constituents, but primarily removing the ITR, the transferability language, and assuring that the work to clean up the property site will be done with 90 days, and Stafford County has enough assurances to ensure that should anything be defaulted, that we will be protected.
Mr. Chairman, just one clarification, the removal of the ITR related to the transient occupancy tax that was proposed, but all the other ITRs would stay in place.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you very much, sir. The calculates to the ITR.
Okay, I have a motion.
I will, I will second that.
Mr. Cavalier will second. Are there any questions, any discussion? I'm sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none? I'm sorry, Mr. Cavalier.
One question?
Yes.
How long are we giving them to sign?
Now, Mike, you shouldn't have gone all the way to the back.
I think at the outside, it would be 30 days, based on that securities provision.
I'd like it to be quicker than 30 days.
As soon as we can get the understanding to the civil engineer and our staff what that amount is, and they post a letter of credit, then we'll have them sign it immediately. Then we'll be back to the board.
What happens if they delay with their civil engineer?
Then it'll come back for, to be rescinded.
That, yeah. Can we say that? That if it's not...
Wait a minute, hold on. I think we're getting way out off in the deep weeds now. Let's, you're going to give them 30 days to sign, correct?
Yeah, 30 days to come to this agreement.
So if they don't sign within 30 days, it comes back to us, and we make the decision as to whether to extend or rescind.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is everybody satisfied with that?
Not really. I'm really confused as to why we're factoring in the, working with the Mosaic civil engineer on that one aspect of this whole agreement. Why can't we put some caveat in place and say, "We would like you to sign this within two days," and still give them that 30-day sign to work for you and your staff to work with their staff, civil engineer, but start the timeline on everything else? Because that's what we want, is the cleanup to occur. Not 30 days, the 90 days will only start 30 days from now if we wait for that to occur. That can be done in parallel with the agreement if we can get them to sign as soon as possible. And that's really, you know, I don't know why we'd want to wait a 30-days window just for that information from their civil engineer. I think we can, David, can we not work around that? Or Rashida, I'm sorry.
I would make two, two points. I believe the language that Mosaic agreed to, which we have their tender approval on, had 30 days in it, so I would note changing that could change their approval. The second thing I would note, I believe what Ms. Mauer was getting ready to point out, is that the resolution has that it will be rescinded if Mosaic won't agree to sign it. So if the board would like to put a deadline on that, they can add a timeframe, but the resolution does already include the direction to rescind the agreement if they will not execute the amended MOU.
So if they don't sign what we're putting out there, it automatically gets rescinded according to the resolution that we are...
But within which timeframe? Maybe they don't want, exactly, they cannot sign forever. Yeah, and that's what I think Mr. Cavalier's making a friendly amendment to do, to put a timeline on their signature. Is that right?
I'm just trying to untie the nexus with the work with the civil engineer and them signing the agreement. And, I mean, do you think it's, that they're that worried about the estimate that the civil engineer's going to come up with, that it would preclude them from signing this agreement? Isn't that something that can be done in the process? I mean, we could give them an out that if, that if it, you know, it's too high of a dollar amount, then, then they can rescind it on their own. But, you know, I want to get the ball rolling on this, not, not wait 30 more days.
We can reach out to them and let them know the board's wishes, and if you want to give them a week to sign it, we can do that. And, you know, it's up to, it's the will of the board.
I'd like it signed at least before the next board meeting, which is what...
July 2nd.
Because then we don't have a meeting for a long time. So signature, if we can do that and uncouple those two things and still require that 30-day civil engineering response, then I'd be fine by having them sign it by our next meeting on July 2nd.
We could effectively say that that has to be resolved in two weeks and... Could change it to two weeks, that, that the engineering review's going to have to happen. Otherwise, they would be taking a risk whenever they sign it, that we could come up with any number, so.
Yeah, and I, I think that Mr. Cavalier mentioned that they could decide to rescind it on their own if they didn't agree with the number. But...
You can put a deadline on execution of the agreement if you want to, I think is the point. Even with the 30 days hanging out there.
So we could have a deadline of execution of the agreement that's in a shorter timeframe than the 30-day civil engineer response, and where everybody's good with that.
And they're taking the risk if they delay past the two weeks.
Sure.
Not getting this resolved on what the cost is going to be on the letter of credit.
We had not discussed with Mr. Sodi the deadline for him to sign, but we can tell him tomorrow and let you know if he's okay with that by July 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think we gotta, you gotta act on something tonight, and he's going to have to, he's going to have to meet your deadline if that's what you want to achieve.
Yeah, even the civil engineering thing shouldn't take more than two weeks, to tell you the truth. I mean, well...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion.
Let me ask one question, the county attorney. Is this, are you okay with this two-week timeframe?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a workable timeframe.
Okay, fine. I hear amendment to the motion.
My amendment to the motion to R19-whatever, 186, was to add to the language to have an agreement or an assigned agreement by July 2 at our next meeting, or it's rescinded.
Mr. Cavalier, you agree with the amendment?
I, I'm not into the automatic rescission. I just want the, the signed agreement by, in two weeks, and then I think we, we're going to be here for, for a meeting, and we can decide at that point.
No.
And that we have to make a formal vote on rescission anyhow.
Welton? Tonight, we're voting to give them two weeks, jump in here, county attorney, two weeks to sign, and what happens if they do not sign by July 2?
It depends on the direction of the board. Currently, the resolution is drafted, would automatically rescind. However, if the board doesn't want it to be that direction, it can change the resolution and change the motion.
I have a motion on the table.
I'll second your motion.
Well, Mr. Cavalier was the second of their recent motion. So I guess what I'm asking is, how do you want to change it? You're saying you don't want to rescind it if they don't sign?
I'm just saying, I don't want it to be automatic. I want to have the ability to discuss and vote on that issue on July 2 if they haven't signed it. Simple.
My only fear with that is it's not going to give them much of an incentive to sign.
The incentive would be that we're going to march in here and rescind it on the 2nd.
Yeah, but we've been discussing this and pushing the ball down the court for, for about a quarter of a year.
No, I don't have a problem with the two weeks. But I mean, I don't have a problem with what you want to do if that's what you think you need to do. But I'm just saying, I don't think it's much an incentive to them to sign if they know they're going to get another day in court.
That's correct.
They're going to come back before this board, and then we'll have to go through this whole process again. That's my only concern.
Well, we'd be down to just one point to, to discuss versus a lot that we had today.
Okay. Well, it's your guys' district, not mine, so I'll go along with what you want.
It's actually Cindy's.
I'll go along with whatever you want to do. All right, I have a motion. Please restate it.
I'd like to make a motion for R19-186 to authorize the MOU with the suggested changes that have been identified by staff. In addition, I'd like to ensure that that signature is done by July 2.
I have a motion. Mr. Cavalier, you were second. Are you still second?
I was second as you, as you just stated that, yes.
Okay.
Resolution includes automatic rescission. It's written in the resolution.
It's in the resolution. Yeah, sorry. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six, nothing with one absent. Thanks staff for a long day. Thank my fellow board members for a long day. We are adjourned until July 2.